I'd like to call to order the Malibu City Planning Commission Regular Meeting of August 19, 2024. The meeting is being held in a hybrid format that allows members of the public to participate in person or remotely by Zoom. In-person participants, if you would like to speak, please submit your Request to Speak form to the clerk before the item is called. Only in-person participates may donate or accept donations of time. Remote participants, if you would like to speak, please raise, join the Zoom meeting, printed on the agenda, and raise your hand in the Zoom when the item you wish to call has been called, wished to speak on has been called. Commissioners, when you have comments, please raise your hand, and I will call on you when you, in turn, and we will can make our discussion clear. And for the record of the public, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Pete?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Here.
Chair Mazza?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Let's see here. Not many choices. May we have our new Planning Director please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
And that is to also continue Item 4A to September 3, 2024.
And gentlemen, I believe you are also going to reorder the agenda this evening to hear Item 5A prior to Item 4B.
Okay. Will you make a motion?
No.
I think we should do the 4A first.
Yeah, I mean, here's, here's the issue, not so much 4A, here's the issue with 4B. Isn't that already been?
Pushed twice.
Pushed more than once.
4A is continue.
4B.
Yeah.
They're talking about reordering and putting the housing element before greenwater, correct? I have no problem doing that. If you guys want to do that, I know that there's people here to speak on that. I just want a commitment from everybody here that we get to that item tonight.
My comment would be that the housing element may be more freewheeling, and who knows how long it'll take, so maybe we should do the order as published.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Is that a problem, Rebecca?
It's not a problem, but we just need to stick to the order.
No, I know we promised to, I just wanted to find out.
Well, if you commit to not leaving the building without a final decision on the housing element.
Oh, we would never do that.
But we do have quite a few highly-paid consultants here this evening for the housing element as well. We have three additional consultants available to you remotely, in addition to the people that are here in person.
Okay, well, let's take a vote.
So.
All in favor of Scottish motion?
So, hold on, my motion is to just continue with the meeting as is.
Right.
Okay.
And we're adding a promise to stay here till the world ends.
Hang on, you're, we're leaving it alone?
Yeah.
Greenbar before the housing element?
Okay.
In a timely manner.
In a timely manner. Do we need a vote?
We do, and could you confirm who was the second to that?
I was the second.
Thank you, Craig. Commissioner Pete?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Can we have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on August 9, 2024.
Okay, there were no ceremonial presentations, so we are now on to Item 2A, which is Written Communications with the Public on Items Not Before the Agenda Tonight. Do we have any?
We don't have any in-person speakers, but we do have virtual speakers this evening.
Okay, who's the first virtual speaker?
Jason.
I'm opening the hearing. Jason, you're on for three minutes.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Commissioners. I'd like to start this evening by playing an audio clip from February 21, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting.
Yeah, under no circumstance do we want to give them a continuance.
Commissioner Mazza, your microphone is not muted.
Okay, thanks.
You just heard Planning Commissioner, Planning Commission Chair John Mazza tell someone on the phone, and I quote, "Under no circumstance do we want to give them a continuance." This was the Cuthbert Project, and this was before a vote. He's not being objective because it seems his mind was already made up. He's telling everyone that he wants this motion to fail. I believe this was a Brown Act violation. It's also pretty audacious. It's in the middle of a hearing during a recess, and that is not supposed to happen. At the very least, it's a violation of due process. And if you've tuned into enough of these meetings, you'll know that Commissioners are not supposed to discuss items with other Commissioners, staff, or even the public like John Mazza did. As a former President and current Vice President of the Malibu Township Council, this sure does seem like a conflict of interest to me. But it doesn't really matter who John Mazza was talking to. It's just really bad. A bunch of people saw it happen in real time, others heard it on Zoom, the city attorney heard it, the clerk obviously heard it because she told Mazza he had a hot mic. But I want to focus on the fact that employees heard it. And employees saw that absolutely nothing happened to Chairman Mazza. Even his reaction was no big deal. Hey, thanks. He just shrugged it off. If you're allowed to so brazenly break the rules like Mazza did and get away with it, then what's stopping him from doing this when we're not listening? Mazza, who was appointed by Councilmember Steve Euring, seems to be working on behalf of the Malibu Township Council's agenda rather than in the city's interests. We can't expect city staff to do something about this when they see that there is no punishment. Not even Steve Euring, who appointed him, said a word about it. And Bruce Silverstein, who says he cares about stopping corruption, did nothing either. I can't believe things like this can happen in our city. We're better than this, or at least we should be. Thank you.
Who else do we have?
Howard Rotschke.
Howard, you have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Chair in Planning Commission, I'd like to ask if we could close the hearing in the name of a very special deputy. He was a tactical medic, a SWAT officer. He worked on the helicopter rescues, and he passed away at the age of 47 a couple weeks ago from cancer. He left a family behind of young children and a wife. So, for all they do for us, if you guys could do that, I think that would be great. His name is Gonzo Galvez.
Howard, can you get, does he have a, a non, well, does he have a real first name? I shouldn't say real, but I don't know.
That, John, that's his real first name, Gonzalo.
Gonzo, G-O-N-Z?
No, Gonzalo.
Okay.
Gonzo Galvez.
The only reason I asked, I saw a news report on it where they called him Gonzo.
That's his nickname, that was his nickname.
So I should, okay, anybody else speaking tonight? Ernie, Ernie, you have three minutes. Are you, are you there, Ernie? Can you hear us?
They don't seem to be responding.
Okay, anybody else?
Tim Boswell.
Tim Boswell, okay. Tim, you're on.
Thank you, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. It's hard for Malibu to return to its status as the shining city on the beachside hill when we can't retain and recruit enough good employees to work here. As I understand it, we need about 90 city staffers to operate, to function appropriately, but we barely have even 60 employees right now. When Bruce and Steve came onto the council in 2020, the aggressiveness against staff and city management ramped up significantly, and in that time, the city lost 66% of its employees to resignation or retirement. This is completely unacceptable if we want Malibu to maintain its magic. I think it's because there's an unfortunately toxic work environment, and here's what I think is happening. There's a bunch of collusion with outside organizations like Malibu Township Council, and this collusion creates an environment that frustrates city staffers. I've read Adrian Fernandez's letter, which detailed these abuses. If good people like Adrian, who love this city, he worked here for 16 years, get mistreated, then why would other competent professionals want to work here? Do we think that city employees across the state don't communicate with each other about their experiences with their employers? It happens in every sector, and as we know, good news travels fast and bad news travels even faster. Even Jack Wong, who was an interim replacement for Richard, stayed less than a week before he pulled the ripcord. The problem is that some councilmembers and Commissioners publicly communicate that staffers like Adrian are bad employees. Then a surprise flash mob, not of dancers, but angry residents, appeared and pushed them out. Jack Wong saw this or heard about it through the grapevine and thought to himself, no, thank you. If we can't get the best people, or any people, to work here and remain working here, how are we going to have a great city? We have to hire great people, and we have to treat them with respect. Without a fully-staffed city, it allows public officials like John Mazza, who was appointed by Steve Euring, to take control of planning, code enforcement, public works, parks and wrecks, and pretty much every other department. And if all the experienced staffers are gone, then it's probably a lot easier to fully exert control. For those employees who remain, they might be too afraid to speak up. The way Adrian was attacked is not who we are, at least it's not who we think we are. Sure, the city's mission statement talks about rural and neighborhood character, but what about the character of the people living here and running the city? It's all got to align, but for the last four years, it hasn't. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Those are all the raised hands.
Okay, we're closing the public hearing and going to Commissioner Comments. Anybody have any comments?
Mine's real simple. I was real excited about my grandkids and said that their birthday was on the 12th, and I forgot to say Simon Parker's name, I'm a dork. And, and, and my son's birthday, Dale, his was on the 8th, so that was it. One other thing I have found very interesting on Nextdoor was Gary Wilcox putting up all those pictures. And I've really, really been looking at him, you know, I guess, you know, his folks built the Riviera, and I was trying to figure the angle out of where his parents' house was with how that, that picture was with the line of the hotels up there, you know, the building sitting up there, and, you know, Point Doom on the motorcycle, and just, you know, that's kind of neat stuff. And when people talk today about the Colony Coffee Shop, I guess it obviously was across the street, you know, people said, yeah, I remember going to that. So I truly appreciate when people are able to do that and they show all of us how things were. I mean, that goes for just about any town in America, but I've enjoyed it. Thank you.
Nope, let's get to it. Ready?
Yeah, I've got some. Yeah, first, I'll just observe, it seems like there's a pattern of these accusations, mainly against John and a few others, that I, it would be nice if the people would say who they are and maybe come and talk to us directly, because a lot of it just sounds sort of scurrilous to me. I don't really hear the support or the evidence. I'm not saying it's not true, I don't know, but it would be nice to actually have a little more fire and a little less smoke if there's something here to talk about. Let's see, I, I've asked previously for an update on the coastal ADU stuff, and I know Joyce Yu had said that this relates to the housing element, and maybe we should talk about it then. My point was that, yes, we got the letter from them in March, and we've responded, and I just wondered, how close are we to them responding back to us about what's going on? Maybe we'll put that off to the housing element if that makes more sense to talk about it in that context? Okay. And then finally, following up on the notion that, that any of us might be demonstrating bias by coming in with material about a project that we found in the public on-base or a few verifiable photographs, it's part of the job, of this job for quasi-judicial officials, to come into a hearing with some provisional ideas already in hand. And, and I think it's worth pointing out that in the state of California, judges are actually encouraged to issue tentative rulings in advance of hearings so that the parties can focus their arguments. That presumes that a mind can have ideas in it and still be open, right? That's, that's what we're up here for. So, I, sometimes I'll come in having looked at the code, and I'll ask a question of an interpretation, and the response I might get might be like, well, I don't like the way you're thinking, but without a rebuttal that necessarily addresses the code. And I just wanted to say that, you know, it would be better if the process sounded more like, well, I think you missed the meaning of the language in Section X, and I think you read, if you read Section Y more closely, and then we could have a discussion. Like, I really miss Jeff Jennings on that, because when I bring in a piece of code and he'd call me out and say, well, you're wrong on that because X, Y, and Z, and I'd go, oh, right, okay. But as it is sometimes, now I come away feeling that I was right about something objective, but just got shot down on some sort of fuzzy, more subjective grounds and didn't, I just feel like we need to support our points of view with code better. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Drew?
No, I have no comments.
Okay, prior to the meeting, I talked to the city attorney about what people could say and could not say at public comment, and was reminded of the fact that we have a constitutional right to speak. Now, what the city council had done several times was shut people off when they were making comments that were not directly related to Planning Commission items, which the city attorney said is, was a questionable decision at the time. So, we have speakers coming in, and we have speakers on Nextdoor and Facebook who are obviously campaigning. It would be appropriate, we do have the right Freedom of Information Act to get the phone numbers of people who call in through Zoom, which I'm not intending on doing, but I want the public to take the time to, to do certain things like Google the name Tim Boswell, comma, Malibu, and find out there's nobody here by that name, and wonder who Jason is, and wonder why last week five people on Facebook were called out for not being real people, immediately dropped their Facebook presence, all within an hour. So, the campaign's on, people. Don't believe everything you hear. I recuse myself from absolutely everything having to do with real estate, the Malibu Township Council. The Malibu Township Council is a 501(c)(4), they're not allowed to, because there is 511(c)(4), they're not allowed to engage in politics, and they will not and never have. They've been in Malibu for 77 years, a lot longer than the city has. So, I just want to remind people that when you hear things on social media and speakers, check them out, see if they're true.
I'd like to add a comment, I'm sorry. Is it possible? I'd like to see if all of us would be willing to make a pledge tonight. I'm willing to make a pledge that I will not be speaking up in public or on social media in regards to any other, whether it's a council member or a Commissioner or candidate for this election, and try to stay above the hull fray. I don't know if the rest of you guys would like to sign on to that pledge until after the election?
I would definitely, from the dais, sign on to that. I can't say for, for a fact that in, in the next months that I wouldn't have a comment to somebody about something, but as a general rule, I do try to stay above the fray.
I'm talking on social media or in, in public platforms?
I, I will make a comment. I will not sign on to that. I've been through at least 10 elections, probably 15. I've seen how certain people act with trolls and lies, and we have two city council members under FPPC investigation. We have a lot of statements that have been made already that are flat-out lies. And I don't intend to go out there and be a big politico and stir up trouble, but I cannot stand by and have people attacked when I know they're being lied about. So that's my position. It may not be popular, but that's what it is. Do you have any other comments?
Yeah, I just, I forgot to say, that recording that was played was offered to represent something specific having happened, but from the context, taking it out of context, I don't know what that was even about. I heard you saying on a microphone that you don't want to continue something. I don't know who you were talking to or what that was, I don't remember the moment, so I don't know if that was really evidence that could be offered for anything specific.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll close the Commissioner Comments and go to Staff Comments.
Thank you. My name is Maureen Tamora. Excuse my voice, my voice crackles, and I know it sounds strange. It's not a connection over the internet or over the speakers, it's just me. So please be patient with me. I am thrilled to be appointed by the council last Monday as your interim planning director. I've been here five days now. There's so much to learn, there's so much to absorb. You have complex codes, a very challenging process, but I pledge you my professional best. A little bit about me, I'm a licensed architect, I'm a member of the American Institute of City Planning. My architecture license goes back about 40-something years, and my certification's in planning over 20. So it's a pleasure to put all of that skill to work. This is agency number seven that I will be working for, so you'll get a smattering of a lot of past experience from me, and I hope it's of value to you while I'm here. I'm part-time, I have 960 hours, or until a successor is appointed, so I hope to make the most of my time here, and thank you for your support.
Thank you.
And then, if I could just, one other item, just for information, the city will hold a public hearing on September 9 to consider the Temporary Use Permit Ordinance. This item was previously considered by this commission, as well as the Sounding Ordinance Revisions and Code Enforcement Subcommittee. So for more information, you can call the department, 310-456-2489, or send us an email, And just for further information, the planner working on this zoning text amendment is Joseph Smith, who I've not yet had the pleasure to meet, so thank you.
We've had the pleasure to meet Joseph Smith. Now, I have one question real quickly. Your predecessor, Jack Wong, was here for only several days, and I understand your, your time is limited because of pension plan rules. One of the speakers before stated that he fled the city because of our reputation. It was pension plan rules, wasn't it?
I don't think we need to be talking about the employment status of people that have left, so.
It has nothing to do with employment status, it has to do with whether he was run out of town.
That would be his employment status, whether he left or not, that's beyond the scope of...
Well, okay, then, I guess people can look at the city's press release on the issue and understand that they need to do their research. Thank you.
And Chair, I want to put something on the record real quick, just for the general public. On public comment, it's not required to say your name or your phone number, people are free to, and we ask that they do when they fill out the forms or whatnot, but it's not a requirement, First Amendment reasons, they can call themselves, you know, Duffy Duck.
No, I thought I explained that, but Freedom of Information Act allows you to request all information the city has, which includes the phone number.
Yes, and...
Thank you.
Public records requests, we would go through the standard process of reviewing those, so it just depends on what the request is, and we review those when they come in.
Okay. Okay, we're all done? Any other comments? Okay, we're off to Consent Items, and I'm going to pull Item, yes?
I just wanted to welcome our interim planning director, and I hope that you stay with us for longer than a few days.
Yeah.
650, how many, how many days?
I applied two days already ahead of the last person, so.
Okay.
960.
And, and I also, and thank you for coming to work for us. I also wanted to make a motion to have this meeting in honor of Gonzalez?
Gonzalo Galvez.
Galvez.
Gonzalo Gonzo Galvez.
Gonzalo Gonzo Galvez, is that accepted?
Yes.
Okay, we will do that. Now, we are now off to Consent Items. I'm going to pull Item 3A1 and 3A2. So we have nothing to approve.
There is no 3A2.
3A.
There is no 3A2 this evening?
There's a 3B1. 3B1.
Oh, is that it?
Just say that the project...
3B1, 3B1. Zenith, Rod, Drive.
Lost Flores and Zenith, okay.
Okay, and...
So, there's, we're not consenting to anything, we're starting with 3A1, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Very quickly, on 3A1, Condition Number, it's on page, it's Condition Number 108, which requires wave uprush, et cetera. And this is far from the ocean, so I'd like to eliminate that one, one condition. Is there an objection to that?
Well, I mean, I think we'd have to see if the applicant is opposed to having the wave uprush study eliminated from their project up Lost Flores Canyon. I would imagine not, but...
Mr. Smith, would you like to address that?
For the record, Don Schmitz, on behalf of the applicant, I realize we need to take into account sea level rise, but I do not believe that we have a concern in regards to that. I am looking at the conditions, though, Chair. You said that was Condition Number 108?
Yes, it's on page...
108's on 24 of 26 deed restrictions. And it says, property subject to wave action and erosion. Not only do I accept that condition, I will express my embarrassment that our review of the conditions did not, did not find that. We, of course, will accept that modification, and there is a, I don't think it's, it's an issue at all. There's a typographical mistake where one condition is, or in the findings, it's broken up into two, but it doesn't change the substance whatsoever. So, good catch, Chair Mazza, and if I could just very briefly welcome Maureen. I had the pleasure of working with her when she was the Director of City Cal-Bass, a very keen intellect and a lot of character. She's going to be a real asset to us. So, yeah, that condition modification is more than acceptable. Thank you.
Okay. Any objection to receiving file, or whatever we call it? Nope? Okay, now, 3A2. 3B2.
That would be 3B1.
3B1, I'm sorry, I wrote my notes wrong. I'm used to A, B, ones and twos. I'm used to A, B, ones and twos. Okay, I received a call from the city attorney about an hour ago stating that it had been reported that, well, first disclosure, and actually, does anybody else have a disclosure on this item?
Met with Luis Tennant at the job site on Friday with Commissioner Leonard.
Same thing.
And I met on, was it Friday? When I came in with John, and I don't know if we learned anything ex parte. We talked about, we talked about the possibility of backup power for the lift.
Okay, Scott, or anything?
I spoke with Luis about it. We were trying to make a time to meet. I was unable to.
Okay. Luis, could you come up? First, there's a recommended, well, first I'm going to state what I'm going to state. The city attorney called me, said I've been accused of, and Craig had been accused of threatening Mr. Tennant with not passing his item and making it a CDP, and that we required that he put in electricity for the basement. And as Craig stated, we just discussed that with him at that night. And I'd like you to weigh in on that and weigh in on the fact of whether or not you want that provision in your application.
But before we do that, that's not appropriate. We're not here to do that prior to being voted on.
I was told by the city attorney to do it.
To have him weigh in on that?
To have, no, no.
I don't believe so.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about weigh in on the, no, I was supposed to ask if I had threatened him. And number two, I'm asking him now if he would like that amendment to his 3B1.
It's not how it was communicated to me by the city attorney, but.
Okay, that's how it was communicated to me. So it's up to you. You don't have to answer the question if you don't want.
And the attorney called me, and I clarified that. It was discussed between us, and it was a great suggestion. It wasn't required. And I discussed that with the owners, and they were already planning on doing that, so why not make everybody happy? And I wasn't sure if we could add a condition, being a consent calendar, but we were able to amend the NOD, and I appreciate the suggestion, actually, so nothing was enforced here.
Okay, thank you. Is there any objection to adding that condition?
So you're adding a condition to have backup power in place for a car?
He's already added the condition.
Right, that's what the condition is.
Yeah, yeah. No objections? Yes.
Sorry, just as a point of clarification, the condition, based on the request of the applicant and owner, the city planning department issued a revised notice of decision earlier today.
Okay.
Adding that condition of approval to the existing notice of decision. It only changed the decision date to today's date instead of the earlier date, so their appeal period will begin tomorrow morning.
Okay, so all we have to do is receive.
It's just to receive and follow.
Since we've opened it, I do have one question. We neglect, I neglected to look at the width of the access when we were there. It seems pretty narrow, and maybe we could just get a clarification that they can easily have 20 feet all the way to the driveway.
Fire department signed it.
Well, we can ask our staffer.
Well, my wonder and my concern is that there, you get, you only need 15 feet for the last stretch to the house, but there's a burnout there right across there, so that would technically be two houses there still. They didn't want 20, so I just, I don't know if the fire department caught that.
Well, let's ask staff. We don't need to ask commissioners. They don't know.
And I didn't even look. Maybe you've got 20 feet already. I don't know.
Just as a formality, could you close the public hearing? We do not have any Zoom speakers this evening.
Close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like staff to respond?
Yes, just a quick comment, because we're going to move this along.
Okay, so Chair Mazza, members of the commission, so this sheet above here, it's really hard to read, I'm sorry, but this is approved by the fire department for access, and it looks like certain, this is the private road here, that the fire department would like to be widened. And I guess my cursor doesn't show up here, does it? Well, it's that parallel line, so, and it would have to be widened to, in some places, 20 feet, in other places, 19 feet 4 inches, so whatever the fire department requires, the applicant would be required to do accordingly. It's a fire department condition as well.
So there are no issues about that easement or anything in the right of way or anything like that? This is part of the project, right?
So there's an easement that is 20 feet wide, and we showed the fire department where it has to be cleared up. There is a portion that one of the neighbors has grass over it, so we have discussed with everybody, and they, so the fire department will have to see that that's done before providing the CFO. So it's like a condition.
Thank you.
Satisfied?
Thank you, yeah.
Okay, let's move on to item 4B, which is, thank you very much for your answer. Item 4B is coastal development permit, Woolsey Fire Permit Number 21-006, Lot Line Adjustment Number 21-002, Variance Number 23-026, Site Plan Review Number 23-028, An Application for the After-the-Fact Lot Line Adjustment Construction of a New Two-Story Single Family Residence with Attached Garage, Grading, Landscaping, and Other Associated Development and Installation of a New Wastewater System Continued from August 5, 2024. The locations are, the location is 29280 Greenwater Road. Okay, may we have a staff report, please?
Yes, hi, Chair Mazza, members of the planning commission. Tyler Eaton presenting for the case partner Akash Shaw on this project tonight. Our next item, as mentioned, is a CDP application for a new single-family residence. It includes a lot line adjustment and a variance on a parcel affected by the 2018 Woolsey Fire. So this site actually involves two parcels. They are located in the Point Doom neighborhood at the end of a cul-de-sac on Greenwater Road. Although some maps show that there are three separate parcels here, there are really only two legal parcels involved in this application. So for the purposes of this application, we have Lot A, which is recognized as the main subject parcel, where the new single-family residence is proposed at 29280 Greenwater Road, and we have Lot B, which is identified as assessor's parcel number 4468005028. Lot A once had a single-family residence on the property that, as mentioned, was destroyed in the 2018 Woolsey Fire, and the applicant is proposing to build a larger home than what was there previously. The project includes 6,486 square foot two-story single-family residence with an attached garage, a swimming pool, spa, and associated equipment, a driveway, 851 cubic yards of non-exempt grading, some hardscape, landscape, outdoor lighting, retaining walls, vehicular gates, water features, and an onsite wastewater treatment system. It includes a lot line adjustment for a lot line adjustment between lots A and B, and includes two discretionary requests, a site plan review for construction up to 28 feet for a pitch roof, and a variance for a non-conforming lot size of parcel one. So as mentioned, this subject application includes an after-the-fact lot line adjustment to memorialize a land transfer that took place before cityhood. In 1974, a small triangular portion sat atop of Lot A, shown in green, and was transferred to Lot B, shown in red, through a grant deed. This land transfer was not accompanied by either state or local approval, and therefore occurred in violation of the State Map Act of the time. The owner of Lot A will officially be granting to the owner of Lot B the triangular portion of the property as mentioned. The newly created parcel one, shown on the right in green, will be less than an acre in size and does not meet the minimum lot area required by the LCP or MMC for the Rural Residential 1-Acre Zoning District. The applicant is proposing a variance, oops, sorry about that. Applicant is proposing a variance to memorialize the historical land transfer between the two lots. The enlarged Lot B will maintain its conformity with the LCP and MMC. Here's a proposed site plan. The residence will be 5,515 square feet, and there'll be an attached garage. There's a, the attached garage in Jim will equate to 971 square feet. The total development square footage for this proposal is 6,486 square feet. There's also a new pool, some hardscape landscaping around the property as well. The height of the home is proposed to be 28 feet, which requires a site plan review for height over 18 feet. And then when this project was story-pulled, staff did receive some correspondence from some neighbors, which we will get into here. The first bit of correspondence we received is from 29271 Greenwater. This neighbor is northeast of the subject site and is also a Woolsey Fire destroyed property. They contacted staff about possible obstructions to their blue water views. The unfortunate thing was staff could not complete a primary view determination for this property because a home was not onsite, and the owner did not get a PVD prior to their house burning down in 2018. So they do have an approved project for a new single-family residence, and the construction of the site is ongoing. So the staff did go out and tried to see if there would be any impacts, even though the code does not protect any. And they can, staff was, it was inconclusive whether views would be obstructed. There are blue water views that are obstructed by the proposed development, but most of them seem to be at 18 feet or below. And as you see to the picture on the left there, there was a lot of existing vegetation that has the ability to grow back under current PV application rules that could also hinder additional site view sheds. The next piece of correspondence we got was from another neighbor at 29272 Greenwater Road. Very similar to the other Greenwater neighbor, there is no residence at this property as of current, and they did not have a PVD documented prior to their house burning down. So nevertheless, staff still went out and visited the site in November of '23, and we still tried to address some of the concerns that the neighbor had. As shown in these photos here, similar to the other one, it appears that any view impacts would be at 18 feet or below, so it is not clear if they could get a PVD, if it would have any benefit to them based on this project. The last piece of correspondence we received is again a view issue. This one is 29254 Blue Water Road, so this is to the north of the property. It sits in between this property and 29271 Greenwater Road that we mentioned previously. This neighbor does have a PVD. This house did not burn down, and this neighbor does have a PVD that was documented prior to the Woolsey Fire, so they had pre-established views already. Staff went out, and it did appear that some of the structure over 18 feet could block blue water views, but the, there is a house, as mentioned, on 29271 that is proposed to be rebuilt, and that is an 18-foot structure that will completely block this view once it's fully built. There's also some existing, some folias that will be planted that will also diminish this view. So after the neighbor understood that project that was going on and had discussions with the applicant, they withdrew their concern, and that correspondence is in your packet for the night. So even though there were some concerns from the neighbors, none of them could be substantiated by the code, and so the staff recommendation is that the planning commission adopt, find that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Equality Act and approve the project as conditioned. We're available for any questions.
I have a quick question. You stated when you talked about the lot line adjustment, that when the, when the original parcel was sold, it violated the MAP Act? And has the MAP Act changed since 1972?
No, but, so, do you want me to go into more context about that?
Yes, please, because I'm going to offer later a, something to solve the problem, I believe, but number one, I understand that all those lots were zoned one acre when originally done, and this would reduce that. I don't see, what I need to know is the difference between 1972 and now as far as the law goes, and why there are three APN numbers.
This is essentially a cleanup item, so there was a legal transfer of the property to the current owner, who still holds it since 1974. They did not finish the legal process at the time, and so this application is just to memorialize the land transfer that occurred in 1974. So it's more of a cleanup, so it's not really approving a non-conforming parcel as it is today. It's just memorializing a land transfer that is already acknowledged by the county. And if you look at the county assessor data, the other owner, not the applicant, is the registered owner for that parcel.
Question on that?
Go.
For, not for the residential application, but for the LLA, do we not need to have both part, both owners' parties to the application?
Yeah, so as we mentioned before, both subject sites are part of this application, and they received acknowledgement from the other property owner to process this application.
So they don't have to be an applicant per se? They just have to agree?
Correct.
Well, what I'm trying to understand.
Chair.
Yes.
Should we probably hear from the applicant?
I want to get this straight first. When we, if it wasn't legal in '72, four, and the law hasn't changed, how do you go back and clean it up and make it legal?
So there was, it was probably not well known. I'm just taking a guess. I wasn't even born in 1974, but it probably was not well-known since the law was pretty new. It was only two years old at the time, and so it was probably not common knowledge that you needed to do this kind of legal recordation with the county at the time. That was probably learned later, and the current owner, like I said, has held ownership, has a deed, and also the county acknowledges them as the owner since 1974.
Okay, can I ask the city attorney a question? It's always been my understanding that ignorance of the law is not a defense. So how do you take something that was illegal in '74 and still illegal now and retroactively make it legal?
Yeah, these items also are going to be considered grandfathered, so that the fact that they were illegal so long ago kind of doesn't play into it now. That's why we're doing the cleanup here, is to bring them into compliance, and so the fact that it hasn't been an issue for 50-plus years is why it can come into compliance now. So if there were issues over time, it might be a different story, but not here.
So there's a principle of law that if you wait long enough, you can, you don't have to follow it?
No, I'm not saying that. What I said is the reason it's okay here now, you can't take that and apply it everywhere. I'm just saying for this set of facts, that's what it is. So a lot of laws that are different have substantial compliance to be a reason that you don't have to fully comply, so there's a lot of different legal issues, but that's just the one for this one today.
Let's hear from the applicant.
Okay, we're going to, any other questions, staff? Okay, we're going to open the public hearing.
Prior to opening the public hearing, could we get disclosures, please?
Oh, sorry, disclosures?
I talked to Mr. Haney on the phone. I didn't learn anything different.
I spoke with Mr. Haney on the phone, and we also met at the site. I think it was a long time ago, though, when we.
November.
From November, there you go. So didn't learn anything different. I think that the issues that were, at the time, came up in regards to the view stuff have sort of resolved themselves, so.
Yeah, must, so November was the last hearing, when it was scheduled to be heard? We didn't hear it.
Yes, we met prior to that.
That, because, yeah, on that one, I met you on the site. We talked about the view, potential effects, how the prior house was sited further down the lot. Prior to the last schedule of this, what was it, two weeks ago or last month, we, I sent an email to Akash asking for the usual data on neighborhood character, TDSF for the, we usually, you know, we look at sizes within the 500. the, we usually, you know, we look at sizes within the 500-foot circle. He, he didn't have it. He said, well, it's, we have a building to lot ratio, but that's something we only use in the commercial context. So then I did ask Norm on the day after, when the hearing was continued, and just today, we finally did get that, that 500-foot circle. I had to do a lot of crack math on that because we, you didn't do the averaging of those numbers, but I, we can get into that. I did a little bit of math on that, and I'll share that with, with my colleagues here. On Thursday, I looked at the site again, and I was invited by the foreman on the upslope site, the 29271 across the cul-de-sac, invited there to take a look at the view from there and stand right where the house is going to be. And yes, the blue water view will be, the, the blockage will be substantial, but yes, also, it's really hard to tell how much of it is, some amount of it is over 18 feet. It, you know, whether it's, you know, we're splitting hairs at that point, I don't know, but I think it may be worth talking about. So those are my disclosures.
I went to the job site and met Mr. Haney there back in November, and I think I had a phone conversation with him last week.
Okay, I had a phone conversation with Norm a week or two after the last hearing was continued about the lot line problem, and then I discussed it with him about a week ago for about 15 minutes. We just talked about laws and lot lines and weird stuff like that. Okay, now, now we'll open the public hearing, and is, we have one speaker, Norm. Do we have any other speakers? Is anybody on Zoom?
No, there's no raised hands.
Okay, Norm, you- Sure, well, you've got 15 minutes, and nobody rebutts.
Start going. Yeah. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to represent this project, commissioners. I do have a PowerPoint, and I'll go through it. However, with regard to the question that Chair Maza referenced, the, prior to 1972, anyone could sell a piece of property with a meets and bounds legal description and a, and a grant deed and simply record it. It's that simple. In 1974, they changed it. The State MAP Act said, no, you either have to have a parcel map or a lot line adjustment. And that became the law. But many, many people did not know that. And in fact, on May 9th of 1974, Robert Dillon purchased that small triangle because it encroached into his property. And I don't know what he paid for it, but he paid for it. He got a grant deed, and the tax assessor gave it a parcel number, as though it were a legal parcel. And he's been paying taxes on it for the past 50 years. And this is a cleanup. Now I'll move forward. Can I get the, the PowerPoint up? Okay, next slide. Which, which button? Right here? Oh, you have to push it harder? Okay.
Hit the middle button.
The middle button. Okay. This basically shows, let me get something out here quickly, hopefully. The property is on Greenwater. There we go. And it's right here. Greenwater comes down this way, and Doom, Doom Road comes this way. Let's go to slide three. Slide three, that's two. Oh, I'm the one supposed to do this. Okay.
Can you run it for him so he can focus on his-
I changed the slide.
We're currently on slide three.
Okay, let's stick with, go back, this one. The yellow shows the property here. That's at the end. This is the cul-de-sac of Greenwater. This is the lot that had filed a, a view determination. When that person found out that they had the ability to not go against a project, but they would still have the right to go against other projects if they objected to them. At that point, there was a termination. They realized that the foliage would grow back and block their view, so they withdrew their opposition to the project. Next slide. Basically, the project is a clean sheets with the exception of that small triangle. It's been approved by the planning department, the geology department, the environmental health department, the public works department, the biology department, the county water department, and the county fire department. Next slide. This is the triangle right here. And Mr. Dillon owns this property, and he owns the property here as well. So this does intrude into his property, and that's why he acquired it 50 years ago. Next slide. So this merely shows that we meet the side yard setback, the front yard setback, the backyard setback. All of the setbacks, we meet. The front yard setback is supposed to be 35.22. Ours is 43.29. Next slide. This is an overlay showing the, the setbacks right here in dash lines, and we meet them. The previous house did not. Theirs is a 10-foot here, and it's supposed to be 25. And they also, this is their storage area, they didn't meet the front yard setback. This is the previous house. So we're basically building in approximately the same location as the original house. Next slide. This is not a very good picture of the original house, and I have a better one. This is the original house. It has a ridge right through the middle of it, right here. Next slide. This is the tax assessor's analysis of size, and you'll see that this area here is 60 feet. This area here is shown as 30 feet. Next slide. This is discussion about the actual size of the property. I have a 1/8 scale of the aerial photograph, and it shows that the length of the roof is actually 72 feet, and the width of the roof is actually 40 feet. If you make an assumption that the eaves are 18 inches on both sides, in other words, and that's the standard for the time in 1967 when the house was built, you end up with 69 feet times 37 feet. And you multiply that times two, it's a two-story house. The house was actually 5,106 feet. And you add to that 908 for the storage and the garage, and that came from the tax assessor. It's not unusual. Houses were built in the 50s and the 60s, often were larger than what they admitted to the tax assessor. It's just, it doesn't happen today, but it happened a lot back then. Next slide. You've already seen this. This is a plot plan of the proposed project. Next slide. This is the plot plan of the hardscape. Next slide. This is the plot plan of the house, the garage, and the gym. Next slide. This is an interesting slide because right here is the ridge of the house. 95% of that ridge is actually above the floor of the house at 203, and the ridge is at 228. So in fact, the ridge is only 25 feet above the existing floor of the house. Now, with the exception, right here, we have a small area that's 28 feet, and that's why we show it as a 28-foot house. Next slide. This is the roof section that I was just mentioning. Next slide. This is the, the architect that designed a rock surface, which are neutral colors and blend in with the, the area. Next slide. Again, the description of the home is a 6,486-square-foot home. The total development square footage structural size chart specifies 6,748. So we are 262 feet below. Next slide. This is a much better view of the previous house. The edge of this, this is 72 feet this way, and this is 40 feet this way. If you take off the eaves, that's where you get the larger house. Next slide, please. This is just another overlay. The blue is what we're proposing. Underneath this, you'll see where the house was located before it burned to the ground. Next slide. This is that triangle, and as I said, Mr. Dillon owns this, and he owns all the property to the west of this line here. So it does intrude into his property. Next slide. Now we're at neighborhood character. So let's have another slide. There we go. This slide references all the houses that we could find within the 500-foot radius. With regard to Greenwater, the average home size there, there are five homes, 4,127 square feet is the average size. Now, the property right here, one of the gentlemen who were opposed to my project, that house was, that house is a 7,272-square-foot house, and that was approved administratively by this planning commission. It's, we're substantially smaller than this gentleman here who is opposed to the project. Next slide. So the total development square footage is, of, of the property, as I said, is less than, the total development square footage structural size chart indicates that the house can be substantially larger. Neighbor's view rights. We've already covered that. The only neighbor that had a primary view over the top of this house has withdrawn their concern. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. How much time do I have left?
You have three minutes and 50 seconds. But we do not have any public speakers for the item. If you wish to use the remainder of your time, this would be your opportunity to do so.
Norm, do you want to keep speaking, or we'll call the hearing over?
Well, in terms, in terms of rebuttal, this project is less than the total development square footage structural size chart allows. The only person that had a right to object with regard to height has withdrawn their primary view concern. It was predominantly based upon the fact that they thought you either had to apply it, or you would lose your right to apply it in other circumstances, your 180-degree area. That's not the case. You can apply it when you want to, and you can withdraw it when you want to. In terms of the triangle, it was transferred 50 years ago. It was a simple mistake. If it had happened 24 months earlier, we wouldn't be having this conversation. He's been paying taxes on it for 50 years. We're just trying to write something that went askew. And I'm available to answer any questions that you might have. Yeah, yes.
We've got to close the hearing first. Are there any other speakers on Zoom?
No, there are no raised hands.
Okay, the hearing is now closed.
This was a Woolsey Fire rebuild. How come you decided to go with a full CDP? Because you wanted the lot line adjustment?
The, the house is not built in exactly the same place as the original house was. We also had the lot line adjustment issue that we needed to confront, and we're, we're not more than 10% over what was originally there. We are 7.3% larger than the original house, according to the calculations that I've just discussed.
So just basically cleaning up all the loose ends, you decided to go for a full CDP on this then?
Well, I think it's because the location of the house is different and everything else with the site plan.
It's more than 110%.
Excuse me, ask to be, do you have a question?
I have, I have a couple things.
Okay, who wants to speak next? Scott, you're on.
I'll make a motion to approve item 4B.
Second.
I will make a friendly amendment, and that is, there's, there's questionable legality here, which may or may not be right. So I'd like a condition that says, before the certification of occupancy is recorded, the lot line adjustment and the extinguishment of Lot C is completed.
Can I ask the city attorney a question about that?
Yes.
What would be your direction for how to approach this?
I would not make that amendment.
Okay.
Okay, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You are honestly saying that it is admitted that it was done in violation of the MAP Act and not recorded? And you're saying that because it's so long ago, forget it? Is that your reasoning?
No, I, I previously told you my reasoning, and you made that same point, and I said, no, that's not my reasoning.
And what is your reasoning?
My reasoning is that variances are for these exact reasons. Variances allow issues to be rectified, whether they're legal issues like this, many of the other reasons, and variances are a legal tool that are allowed for properties. And so that's what is being requested here. And so something that is what I would call a technical violation, we have those type of things that are fixed all the time. No one is 100% perfect in following the law, and so that's what this is here, and so that's the reason.
Can, can a city correct a state law with a variance?
Can a city correct a state law?
Yeah, in other words, you're saying that the city of Malibu is telling the county assessor and whoever records everything that they can ignore the MAP Act?
No, I've, I've told you, it's not an ignoring thing. People should always follow the law, but if there's an issue, that is what a variance is for, is to clean up those issues.
That's not my question. My question is, variance by who, the state or by the city?
The variance is by the city, because this is the Malibu Planning Commission, so that's all that we're talking about here. We're not changing state law or anything like that, but we have to follow state law. And if there is an issue with state law, we interpret it, and we say that a variance is appropriate here. That's what staff has recommended. And so, no, we're not making a variance of state law. That's not what we're doing.
So our variance, our variance finding is that despite the fact that the state law says this, we are saying that we are going to allow it anyway.
We are saying it's appropriate in this situation to issue a variance, yes. If that is what the commissioner votes on. If that is what the commission votes on.
Chair?
Chair?
Tyler, you're up.
I was just going to add, I, I think if anything, this, this is going to clean up and bring these lots into compliance with state law. They will be certified at the end of this, and, and so they will, both lots will have an official CFC that will certify them with the county at the end of this process. So that's what this is for. This is to help legalize these lots and clean up the, what is a non-conforming issue.
Right, and the reason why I'm making that amendment is if that is true, there's no problems, it's done. If there's any wiggle in that, you got a problem.
Chair, if I may? I, I think that our city attorney was very clear in the fact that the way that this is, is being done is the correct way to apply the variance to solve a problem that has clearly been on the books for upwards of 50 years. And this is the remedy to make that right. And I think that we should take our city attorney's advice to move that forward.
Right, and the only thing I'm saying is if he is correct, the certificate of occupancy is issued. If he is not correct, it isn't.
I understand, because...
That's the only thing. So that cleans it up.
I'm not willing to accept a friendly amendment at this time.
John?
Yes?
I have some questions about lot-line adjustment with respect to zoning, not the subdivision MAP Act. And I also have some questions about the neighborhood character stuff. So let's start with the lot-line with the zoning. Is it even possible to grant a variance for a non-conforming lot size? We're, we're, the net lot size here is 93% of an acre. So we're talking about granting a variance to the zoning code to say, yeah, you can, you can cut a lot smaller than what the zoning says?
I believe there's actually 97%.
The net lot size is 93, with, with whatever easements are on there, that's in the report.
That's a question for the city attorney?
Well, or if Tyler has a handle on it, or the attorney, whoever wants to take it, can, is, is, what is, is there a precedent?
I would say, I would say if this wasn't already recognized as that, that, that person's lot, the city, it would be hard for the city to fi, make the findings to support it, because it is an RR1 zone lot. So you're not wrong in that, but what, this is a cleanup item. They're not requesting this in today's terms, if that makes sense.
Okay, okay, now, there's another side to sort of the same question. The staff report says, quote, "The LLA will not contribute to the parcel having greater conflicts with the LCP compared to existing conditions." The question is, can we really say that? Because what we're doing here is legitimating an increased size on parcel two, which would create, would allow a greater buildable area on it, on the other parcel, whether that's both greater TDSF and bigger side yard setbacks. So how is that not creating a conflict with the LCP by enabling more potential development?
So the, the code actually allows you to do a lot-line adjustment on a non-conforming lot as long as the two new lots do not result in one lot that cannot support development. And that's not the case here. As, as we see, there's a single-family home being proposed on this lot. It has no change to what the property owner has lived with for the last 50 years.
Well, okay, and then finding seven, a variance shall not be granted for a use or activity which is not otherwise expressly authorized by the zone regulation governing the parcel process. That sounds to me like you expressly cannot grant a variance for a lot size smaller than one acre here. I, I mean, I'm just reading the code, right? So...
I agree, I agree with you, like I said, that if this was completely new, this was not a grandfather-in condition, as Kellen mentioned, then it would be hard to make those findings. I completely agree with that.
Okay, so we have that on the table to consider. It would, it would, I think, enable more development on Lot 2 that is contrary to what the LCP envisions. But moving on to the site plan review, I, I took those numbers that I got from you today, Norm, and I, I crunched them several different ways. And I, I don't think anybody wants to be bored with me breaking it all down. I try to cut to the chase. If you want to hear my methodology and where I went, but I, I did them a couple, a couple different ways. I did one, if you just took everything within the 500 circle and you made some accommodation for the several parcels that you didn't have data on, but actually looking on the map and saying, okay, that looks like it's a 2,000-square-foot house, so we'll call it 2,500, just to be generous, to get your neighborhood average up. And then I looked at it from the standpoint of, what if you just look at what's on Greenwater and the parcels immediately adjacent to this one, sort of a tighter, more sort of intimate version of what the neighborhood standard might be? Just to kind of get a feel for what those numbers are, would be. And they range from, well, let's see, using the number that Norm just gave us for Greenwater, 4,100-something, that compares, I just did the math on that, that gets us that this would be 158% of the neighborhood there. And then the other numbers I came up with ranged from 153% to 184%. In other words, depending on how you count it, this could be twice as big as the neighborhood average, almost.
Okay.
Can I make the comment?
I just want to make like a simple comment about that, kind of in general, right? When somebody purchases a property in Malibu, they are given some, some direction, sort of from the city's planning code, what, what have you, that says you're able to build a structure up to size X. And I want to be very...
Maximum.
Maximum. Just because you can doesn't mean you should. I think everybody has been historically in agreement on that. But it's not our position, at least it's my understanding and the direction that, that I've sort of always taken in this, in the role here, that I can arbitrarily go out there and say, well, no, because your neighboring properties are 4,000 square feet in average, you're only going to be allowed to build 4,500 square feet, or whatever the, the average is, okay? That argument had always been used to make a home larger in an area where you have a property. And let's say you have 27500-square-foot houses next to you, but you only have a third of an acre, and you're in between them, and you want to be just like your neighbors.
Neighborhood standards.
Neighborhood standards. So I, I very much understand the character of Point Doom, having lived my entire life there, okay? Personally, live in a, you know, relatively modest ranch house, don't, you know, but people are entitled to build a 10,000-square-foot house, and that calculation is based off their lot size. I have a really hard time with us going down a road of an argument of looking at all these properties around it when administratively, almost across the street, a property had been approved with a 7,200-square-foot house.
Yeah.
It just, it's a very hard argument for me to try to make that argument specifically in that, that situation where that's present. Now, if we had six or 10 neighbors here of all these other parcels saying, we don't want that large house in our neighborhood, right? We might have a little bit of a different conversation here, but that's not the case.
Well, I guess my question, framing it up and putting out those numbers that range above and below 150% is, what, what is our precedent when we use that number? I don't, I don't know that we have a clear cutoff, but it seems to me that we have said things like, oh, that's a 140%, that's too much. But have we said 180%, oh, that's fine?
I, I, the, the answer to that, I think, is that you don't have an answer. The answer to your, to your question is you don't design and build and approve a house that's larger than that max TDSF. Right? If you have, if you have a, if, I think that somebody can take, if, if you're a person that wants to live in the community and call the community home, or if you're a developer, for that matter, and you're building a spec house, you don't want all your neighbors to have pitchforks and be coming after you. So if all your neighbors come here and they say, hey, you know, you got to build something that really fits into our neighborhood a little bit better. We really don't believe that this fits into our neighborhood, right? That's for those people to have that discussion, hopefully prior to them.
I'm going to shut this off.
Can I, can I just reply briefly?
Very briefly.
I, I, what you're saying is something I, I have in effect said that if there's a neighborhood to listen to about their character, we listen to them. And I think what you're saying, I mean, that's part of it at least, right? And you're saying nobody here cares.
I, I'm not saying nobody cares. Obviously, you know, there might be somebody out there that's listening that cares, and I think it affects all of our community, because it's the policy that we need to be consistent with. And I think it's important for us to be consistent, to provide the information to any property owner in Malibu, that here's like the, the way that the planning commission is going to address our property, right?
But let's stop here, we're philosophizing.
We're philosophizing on a case-by-case...
Please, please turn off your, your speakers, okay?
But John, this is a case-by-case basis on every single-family home that comes before us.
No, we have a code. We have an LIP. The LIP has community, has neighborhood standards, neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera. It's got specifics. Those specifics are not determined by us. They are determined by the city council and the coastal commission. We do not say, gee, the neighbors are, are unhappy, make the house smaller. The neighbors are happy, make it bigger. We, no, this is all codified. And we are required to make the findings and required to follow it. Now, and then, wait, wait, wait. In this case, there is none of this. It's my opinion, it should be a big house or a small house. It's, it's what is in the code. In this case, it's a Woolsey fire rebuild. Norm has shown what the house was. It qualifies under that. It isn't, we're talking about something that does not apply in this case. But to sit here and say, we had a big discussion at the city council, shall we lower the TDSF? They voted no, okay? They voted no, not us, okay? We do not determine that. We follow the code, period. Okay, now, there are interpretations, but it's not, gee, the neighbors don't like it, or the guy across the street got away with something, or this or that. It's the code.
Chair, if we're following the code, then what the code says is that this house is allowed. So I don't think that...
Yeah, this code says this house is allowed mainly because of Woolsey. It never says in the code, in not one place, that you have the right to build a house to the maximum allowed.
Okay, I, I understand your, I understand your interpretation of that, but my interpretation...
It's written that way.
Okay.
It's the maximum amount that follows the other rules.
Then we don't have the conversation of looking at all these homes around it to then say that we should have a smaller house here. I'm just trying to eliminate that conversation.
Neighborhood standards, it's in the code.
Neighborhood character...
Character is in the code.
Is in the code, and it, and it's one place where we have subjectivity, where we, we, it's, we have to use judgment to weigh what those other numbers mean.
I just find it very hard to apply that subjectivity in an area of Point Doom where you have a house across the street that's larger. That's the point that I made, and that's it.
And this may be, but we have to follow the code, and it's not our opinions. There are variances, there are variations. But in general, you have to follow what, what the LCP and the code says. There is no, no right to build this, right to build that.
That's why I made a motion to approve this project.
Two more, two more quick comments. Landscape maps, L1, L2 show, appear to show development on slopes four to one or greater. Planting, irrigation, I don't know that that's where we allow that.
I don't know that either, but it might have been there before the fire. That might have been part of the issue.
Can you answer that, Tyler?
Yeah, we, like, there's a little bit of vegetation that may be allowed to be planted. Native vegetation, for example, is allowed to be planted in Esha areas.
But it may not be irrigated.
Hang, hang on, we just had a couple of things on Zumira's where we said absolutely nothing on the four-to-one slope.
So you can plant native vegetation because it's, it, it combines with the natural topography of the site. So we don't allow like a non-native tree to be planted in, in those areas. So that, that, that could be the case here.
But, but is this irrigated or not?
I have to double-check that.
Okay, can we, Scott, will you go along with?
It is irrigated.
Okay, that's not allowed. So will you go along with a condition that irrigation on four-to-one slopes is not allowed?
Yeah, but I'd like to see the map of, with the house there before and sort of how that looked, because if it's in a zone that was irrigated...
It's just a condition saying...
Before the fire vaporized the property, I would like them to be allowed to do it again.
Okay, so then we...
There's another issue as well.
Yes, Norm?
The dozers came onto this property and ripped out the foundation and changed the grading completely. So I'm, the topography map was done after the dozers had come on and ripped out the foundation. There are other areas on this property where the foundation was that is steeper than two to one, actually, steeper than two to one. And, but when you put it back the way that it was, it's not steeper. It's closer to 10%, 15%.
So you're saying the dozers came in and made it steeper?
Yes.
Why would they do that?
Carve out the foundation, then you're leaving a big slope.
Because they're only interested in taking out the foundation, they're not interested in putting the dirt back afterwards.
Oh, 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 the hole?
Yes, the hole.
Okay, but we're not talking, we're talking about a slope.
John, is the area that you're referencing in question, if, I don't know if there's a topo map that we have of this that we can pull up, but I think it's towards the rear of the property, is that correct, or is it up near the front?
There's the irrigation plan.
Yeah.
But I don't think, I don't know if that's overlaid on the topo.
I didn't get plans, so...
It was a long time ago that I already looked at that, so I can't even tell you where it is now.
I don't...
I would like to make one comment on the character of the neighborhood.
I don't know, we may not need that.
No, no, I, I, there is question only, no.
Okay.
Final point. We've got 1,800 cubic yards of cut here, spec, and I'm wondering, this is a prime prehistoric location. Do we put in the archaeology condition that we do in prime, pre-Chumash areas?
I think the area, the area where that existed on Point Doom is not so much in the area where this home is. I think it's further down towards Birdview.
Well, it's kind of all around the periphery.
I'm not, I'm not an expert on that by any means.
Remember, Selfridge is the oldest Shulian find in the United States.
Correct, but this is not Selfridge.
I know, but it's not closer to the ocean. It's farther away.
Wisely.
Could we ask the applicant, would you entertain?
The, the thing that I was, the point that I was trying to make on that is that there was already a home here, too.
Well, and my point is there's 1,800 cubic yards of cut.
There is a lot of cut that is going on. I don't disagree with that. Is that, are you, Norm, are you willing to accept a condition?
The, the monitor during excavation provision?
If, if it's insisted upon, we've had an archaeological review before this project was submitted, and it indicates that there are no archaeological resources on the property.
Case one?
I mean, I get, look, it's not, it's not difference if, if they're digging on the property and they're doing a lot of cut, and they come across bones, they're going to have to deal with it.
Yeah.
Maybe.
No, they will.
Maybe.
100% they will. But I, I just, I don't, I don't know if, if we'd see that, I, I would want to be consistent with the monitor on every other property on the planet.
Let's go back to the landscaping. If it's determined that, no, can we change that? If it's determined that no irrigation was on the slope that is being planted, no irrigation will be allowed?
Yeah, how do we go with allowing irrigation to, for native plants to start their propagation on a four-to-one slope?
Establishment.
Establishment.
Coastal has said no irrigation.
No irrigation at all, except for they allow them to come down in the creek and do above, above-ground irrigation until the plants get...
Plant them in November and get, catch the winter rains.
Okay.
Will you go along with that, that condition?
I mean, I'm, I'm just not comfortable with it, because I had actually, you know, that property to me had a lot of trees on it, was fairly green prior to the fire. And I just don't think it's the right thing to do. If it wasn't a Woolsey fire rebuild, I could see the other side of that argument. But with that case, with that being the case here, I think it's a hard one for, or we can ask for more information on it and pull up the map and look at it and do that. I don't know if we have the map available.
I'd rather not bring it back.
On the excavation one, we did, we have required it on Birdview, which is, you know, pretty close there.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was going to hear from the applicant on that. If they're, if they're open to that, I, I don't have, if they want to impose that on themselves, that's fine. Are you guys willing to do that?
Specifically, what is the question, the condition?
Are you, are you willing to have archaeology monitor in place during excavation? That's, that's what you want, correct, right?
Yeah. You probably, you probably have three votes anyway.
It, you know, it's not...
I think it would be the right thing to do.
To me, it's not an issue whether we have three votes or not. It's an issue of what we're doing is the right thing to do for the city of Malibu.
Exactly, thank you.
Norm, why don't you talk with your client for a second? Tyler, is there any drawing in there that has the topo?
Yeah, I have it here, I, I can show you. So it looks like it's the north part of the property, you guys want to see?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it looks like it's...
Specifically, any area where we would come close into a four-to-one slope, but we'll wait for Norm to come back with us.
I want to show this one.
It looks like four-to-one, it's, it's... It looks like four to, it's clear, a four to one slopes all the way up to the 195 line on this topo map we're gonna show you here. And I have to overlay it with the landscape plan to see the extent of the irrigation.
Norm, I asked them to pull up the topo map just so that we can look at it and be clear on the irrigation stuff.
I think that's fine.
Did, did you, did you get a chance to discuss?
I did talk to my client. My client says he's already paid for an archaeological report, and he-
He doesn't want to impose any more conditions on them than all those that are already in place?
Exactly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, so what you see here is the blue is four to one and less, and then everything else is basically more than four to one. So to the north, it's about the 195 topo line where it starts to turn into that pinkish.
Got it. Okay, and then what are the, can we pull up the irrigation or the landscape plan?
There we go. On the northwest side, it's sort of marginal. There's-
So do we just want to say that no irrigation can go past the 195 topo line?
I think what you're gonna say is, if we're gonna say that it's gonna be no irrigation on the four to one slopes that are on, on the, was it five foot contour?
But, I mean, it's still, you still have your question remaining of what did they have pre-existing to grandfather?
Yeah, so when you bring back the resolution, if between now and then you want to confer with them, and they can provide you some kind of, you know, very concrete information, sorry, Rebecca.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that this came with a, a resolution for adoption this evening, so I think we would want to clarify that. Is that off the grid?
That's true.
Okay.
This, this project did come to you with a staff recommendation and a resolution to consider.
As you can tell, it's a very small area. I mean, I don't see any reason not to put the coastal required condition in there.
For no, nothing on the four to one?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're gonna do no, or I'm going to make an amendment to my motion. It's going to say that basically the project complies with the rest of Point Doom, which says no irrigation on the, or development on the four to one slope, which is, there's a small portion on two kind of ends trailing towards the-
Okay, do you accept that, Craig?
Lines.
I'm not in this.
Who said it?
No, Dennis.
Dennis, do you accept it?
It would basically just to be consistent with the rest of Point Doom.
All I can say is that this area was covered with trees in the past, but if that is a condition that's necessary to obtain approval, we will accept it.
Yeah, since Mr. Haney just agreed to that, I was more inclined to go with Commissioner Peak's thoughts about what was there originally, but if Mr. Haney's on board, I'm on board.
Can we call a, call a vote?
So, and Rebecca, we're not putting in the language about the archaeology. They've already done an archaeology assessment. So the only change into the staff recommendation would just be the stuff for no irrigation and development.
So I hope that we would be adding a condition of approval mandating that no irrigation will take place on four to one slope.
Great. Perfect.
Okay, Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Chair Mazza?
I'm gonna vote no because I believe that the amendment I offered would clear this up, and I believe that we have received improper legal advice.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're gonna have a break.
Thank you.
This is a test. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you.
We're reopening the planning commission meeting of August 19, 2024, to discuss item 5A, the 2021 through 2029 housing element and code amendments. May we have a staff report, please? And then Joyce, after the staff report, I want to ask, ask questions on your instructions you gave, we gave us today.
So, staff report? Okay. Good evening, Chair Walsh.
Well, there's no disclosures required on a, on a, on this, would there be? There's nothing to disclose, right?
Kellen, are there disclosures on this item?
No. Okay. Staff report.
All right, good evening again, Chair and Commissioners. Before we get into the specifics of this housing element tonight, I just wanted to start by introducing the team who has worked very hard on this proposal and got us to where we are today. So we have Joyce Parker Boselinski, who you guys all know very well. We have Allison Cook to my left here from Capstone City Planning, also here with us today. And joining us via Zoom, we have our team from Recon Consultants. We have Lily Rudolph, Emily Green, and Veronica Tam. So just very quickly, our purpose here tonight is to obtain a recommendation for the city council on this draft housing element and associated code amendments. This is the culmination of a long process that began in 2021 after the city adopted its first iteration of the 2021-2029 housing element cycle. After years of give and take with the state, we are finally at a place where the proposed changes will likely obtain certification after approval by the council and bring the city into compliance with current state housing requirements. We have until September 23 to adopt the housing element compliant with those state requirements. So it is our intent tonight to get the needed recommendation from this commission so that we can stay on track for the September 23 city council. And it's a long presentation, so we're gonna ask to, if you could let us go through all the issues first, and then we'll take questions after if that's okay. And we'll do first, right? We're gonna pass it off to Lily from Recon Consultants.
Thank you, Tyler, and good evening, Chair Mazza and Commissioners. Is the, okay, just wanted to make sure that the presentation is up. So as background, the housing element must be adopted every eight years, and every jurisdiction is required to having, having a housing element certified by the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD as we refer to it moving forward. The deadline for the city to adopt a certified housing element was October 15, 2021. So it is, we are behind schedule, and the city has been working on this housing element, housing element update for several years. The planning commission reviewed a previous iteration of the housing element prior to the city council adoption in January 2022, and we have since revised the housing element to address comments from HCD to comply with state housing law. So a summary of the project timeline is shown here. And after multiple letters from HCD requiring further revisions and generally working closely with HCD to get it to a point to, to near certification, HCD issued a letter on July 31 stating that the housing element meets statutory requirements of state housing law and will be certified once the city adopts the housing element and the zoning code and LCP amendments that we are going to present tonight. Next slide, So in the spring of 2024, the city council entered into a stipulated judgment with HCD establishing deadlines for the city to adopt a compliant housing element. And the deadlines are listed here. As Tyler mentioned, the city must adopt the housing element no later than September 23. So the city council adoption hearing is scheduled for September 23, and given the need to comply with the terms of the stipulated judgment, staff is recommending that the planning commission take action tonight in order to present the planning commission's recommendations to city council. Next slide. This slide shows all the components that are required to be included in a housing element. The state has specific definitions and methodology for the required analysis for each of these components, and I'll go through these sections in more detail. Next slide, please. The regional housing needs allocation, or RENA, as I'll refer to it moving forward, is the process of allocating a certain number of housing units within all income levels to every city and county in California. So Malibu has an allocation of 79 housing units as shown in this table, and it's broken out by these income categories, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate. The sites- The Sites Inventory in Appendix B of the Housing Element identifies specific sites that are suitable and available for residential development to accommodate the RENA units. So this means that the sites are adequately zoned and physically able to support the number of units proposed. Next slide. So 111 units are planned to be accommodated on two sites, comprising three parcels on PCH that are in the Affordable Housing Overlay. This Affordable Housing Overlay was established in 2013. So it's already in place, although, as Joyce will discuss later in this presentation, we do need to revise the Affordable Housing Overlay in order to comply with state law. So the number of units that could be accommodated are based on a density of 20 units per acre and a maximum density of 24 units per acre, inclusive of a density bonus, and a maximum building height of 30 feet. There is a third site in the city that is also designated in the Affordable Housing Overlay, and this is the city-owned La Paz site in the Civic Center area. This site was originally in the Sites Inventory, but we removed it because HCD requires that publicly owned parcels can only be included in the Sites Inventory if the city can demonstrate that it would sell the property during the planning period, which is from 2021 to 2029, and the city must comply with the Surplus Land Act. So the Affordable Housing Overlay will remain on the La Paz site, but it's not needed to accommodate the RENA. Next slide. So this shows the Affordable Housing Overlay sites. The map on the top of the screen shows the two sites that are in the Sites Inventory, and the map on the bottom is the city-owned La Paz site that is not included in the Sites Inventory. Next slide. So this is a summary table of the City Sites Inventory showing how the city fulfills the RENA requirement. Appendix B, which contains the Sites Inventory, describes how the city can use planned and approved projects and projected ADUs to be credited towards the RENA in addition to the sites in the Affordable Housing Overlay. Planned and approved projects are detailed in Table B2 in Appendix B and include projects totaling 142 units that have certificates of occupancy or issued building permits right now. So those could be credited towards the RENA. And then there's also 30 potential ADUs that are forecasted that we can also count towards the RENA. Those ADUs are forecasted based on historic trends. So the Affordable Housing Overlay sites have an assumed capacity for 111 units, as I mentioned, which satisfies the RENA and also provides a buffer of extra sites in the event that the sites are developed with fewer units than we planned for. Next slide. So the housing plan contains the goals, policies, and programs that the city is committed to accomplish during the planning period. So this is where the actions are identified, that the city will need to actually implement in order to demonstrate compliance with state law. So the programs that have been added include code amendments to ensure that the municipal code and the LIP are consistent with state law and also to reduce constraints to residential development. Joyce will discuss these in more detail, but constraints to residential development include both government and non-governmental constraints, the maintenance improvement or development of housing for all income levels. Constraints to housing that are identified in the housing element must be addressed as programs to remove or mitigate those constraints when possible. Much of our coordination with HCD revolved around appropriately identifying those constraints. So we submitted a version of the housing element that did not describe a constraint that HCD believed was a constraint. So we would go back and identify those constraints, and then we would need to identify programs to address those constraints to housing development. We also added new programs to address affirmatively furthering fair housing, or AFFH, and we strengthened or clarified existing programs, actions, objectives, and timelines as needed from the previous version that you reviewed back in 2021. Next slide, please. So affirmatively furthering fair housing is a new section that we added to the housing element that was not included in the previously adopted version. So this includes fair housing analysis, which is included as Appendix F, and this new section was added to comply with state law and HCD requirements. And this section means that the city is required to take meaningful actions that address disparities in housing needs and in access to opportunities to housing. So it involves enforcing laws that, for example, protect tenants' rights or educating and providing counseling services to tenants and also informing landlords of housing laws. So much of our analysis in this section is geography-based. So you'll see that the AFFH section contains a lot of maps that show population characteristics at the census tract level to evaluate fair housing issues in the city. And those fair housing issues that were identified in the analysis are addressed as programs in the housing plan. Next slide. So this is the summary of those programs that were added to address fair housing issues. Most of these are listed as Programs 5.1 and 5.2 in the housing plan, and then you'll also see on this list programs related to ADUs. Those are mostly listed and described in Program 4.1. So this concludes my portion of the presentation. Joyce will now discuss the proposed LIP and MMC amendments needed to implement the programs in the housing element. Thank you.
Thank you, Lily. Chair, members of the Commission, I am just going to provide a broad overview of the amendments, and then we can answer any questions you may have later. The first one is related only to the city's RENA sites, and it's a... We are required to... Or the developer is required to replace any housing that exists on the RENA sites that is currently rent restricted or deed restricted. In the city of Malibu, there are no rent-restricted units on the city's RENA parcels. So this new requirement, even though we needed to codify it, will have no impact to the city of Malibu. The next one is allow transitional and supportive housing as a regular residential use to be permitted as other uses of the same housing type in the same zone. This is a two-part amendment, so I'll talk about this first. Currently, transitional and supportive housing isn't allowed use in all the residential zones. What this law required is for cities to allow it in commercial zones that allow or institutional zones that allow housing. So our CC zone, for instance, allows affordable housing. Our institutional zone allows a single-family house associated with an institutional use. And so each of these uses would be allowed in the same manner as the house or as the house or the use. So for institutional zone, for instance, since the only thing that's allowed in the institutional zone is a single-family house associated with an institutional use, that's the only type of transitional and supportive housing that would be allowed. It would have to be associated with institutional use. The second half of that is to allow a by right permanent supportive housing in any zone where multifamily or mixed uses where multifamily or mixed uses is permitted. And this is a... While supportive housing is slightly different in the sense that the state law has requirements for these types of facilities to operate, and they have to be 100% affordable. It's a 55-year affordability restriction. There are requirements on how much space is needed for providing services. So it's a much different sort of use. And so while they would be allowed in the multifamily and mixed-use zones, they would have to comply with state law in order to locate there. So they could not... While they are a by right use, they are by right only if they're consistent with the state law and meet all those requirements for affordability. The next amendment would allow multifamily residential uses by right with no conditional use permit. This was required to remove constraints. HCD focuses on multifamily. That is their emphasis because that is the type of housing that would be most affordable in the city. And so you will find, as we go through these, most of these are related to multifamily projects and uses. Because there is no use permit does not mean that coastal development permit would not be required. A coastal development permit would be required because the Coastal Act requires a coastal development permit for anything that is development. And so if you are building a new building, it is considered development, and so you would get a coastal development permit. What would happen is that the project... If somebody were proposing a multifamily project, that would go to the Planning Commission, but only for to look at the development of the building itself. The Planning Commission would not be able to add conditions or regulate the use itself because it is permitted by right. The next revision is... This addresses emergency shelters, and this is required by state law. One of them is to remove or increase the individual capacity limit. That's sort of unique to Malibu. And so our existing code allows, I believe it's 25 max in an emergency shelter, and we have changed that to 55. And that is based on a 2024... I think it's Los Angeles Housing Homeless Count that determines 55 homeless individuals needed housing in Malibu. And so this does not mean that that would be one emergency shelter. It could be multiple emergency shelters. The city just has to allow enough rooms to accommodate the 55 individuals. In addition, state law required the removal of a proximity to a transit stop and the requirement for adequate water supply and sewage disposal capabilities. I think that is a given. All projects in Malibu will have to have adequate water supply and sewage disposal capacity, so they do not need to be called out specifically for an emergency shelter. The next amendment is to create a new land use category, and it's a Low Barrier Navigation Center. A Low Barrier Navigation Center is essentially an emergency shelter that provides support services for the homeless individuals. Amend parking regulations for emergency shelters and navigation centers. This is a requirement by government code to make the parking requirement consistent with the types of uses that would use these types of facilities. The next one is ensure that employee housing for six or fewer persons is treated as a single-family use. This is the Employee Housing Act. And this would apply only to those types of industries that provide housing for their employees, like ag workers. And in order to operate... Yeah, to operate an emergency... Or I'm sorry, an employee housing facility, you would need a permit from HCD. And so HCD permits these. They monitor them. They inspect them. They license them. So not everybody could come in and apply for and obtain employee housing. The next amendment is to amend the parking requirements for basically all the various unit sizes for multifamily units. Again, HCD's concern is mainly multifamily. And this will reduce the number of required parking spaces and remove the enclosure requirement. And this is done to remove constraints because if you have to provide enclosure requirements, that is a financial impact to multifamily. And then also not requiring as much parking allows more room to build the multifamily units. So these are, again, only for multifamily. Those are the minimum. They are not the maximum, of course. So any private developer that was coming in and building a market rate project, they can provide as much parking as they wish in order to make their project successful. Let Tyler do this. All right. So the next couple of amendments are related to the city's Affordable Housing Overlay. And the city has to, by state law, modify our by right approval threshold to 20% affordable units. Currently, it's 50%. State law indicates at 20% affordable units, they are entitled to the maximum density. And again, the maximum density would be the 20 dwelling units an acre, 27... Or minimum 20 dwellings an acre, and maximum would be 27. In order to accommodate 27 dwelling units an acre, the parcels in the AHO would be allowed a maximum height of 30 feet, and the code would remove the two-story limit. And this is because it is difficult, if not impossible, to build 27 dwelling units on a one-acre parcel in a two-story building. And so, again, to accommodate and ensure that the city was providing the affordable units as required in the AHO, this was a requirement. The next amendment is to amend the city's density bonus regulations consistent with state law. That's pretty straightforward. The density bonus law changes every few years, and all cities have to update their zoning code to be consistent with that. And then again, for multifamily only, the code would allow alternatives to story poles, such as a photo simulation to demonstrate that the building was not blocking ocean views as required in the Coastal Act, not in the municipal code. It's Chapter 6 of LIP. And this was done, again, because HCD believes that story poles are very expensive and would be a burden to multifamily projects. The next one is request for reasonable accommodation. This is a section that's already in the city's code. And the reasonable accommodation currently has a provision that says that the planning director can refer projects to the Planning Commission to consider and that one of the things the planning director can consider when they approve it is whether it would have a material effect on the surrounding properties. Since that is a subjective finding, HCD required us to remove those and only use objective findings. So all the rest of the findings will stay, but the material effect on surrounding properties will be removed, and the review of these would be limited to the planning director. The next two items are cleanup items. In the municipal code, mixed use is not mentioned anywhere, yet it is currently allowed with a CUP in the Commercial General Zone in the LIP. So this is a cleanup to match, to make the municipal code match the LIP. So mixed use would be allowed in the MMC with a CUP only in the CG zone or the Commercial General Zone. The next item is to add in both the MMC and the LIP parking requirements for single-family dwellings. Somehow, the code does not have parking requirements specifically called out for single-family dwellings. Staff has been using... Staff has been using the parking requirements for single-family homes, I believe in an overlay district. And so this will clean up that and make it clear for staff and for applicants. Thank you. There are three future code amendments. The city will have until the end of 2025 to work through these amendments. The first one is to allow residential care facilities for seven or more people in all residential zones with an administrative permit. These are known as large residential care facilities, and they are currently only allowed in the Commercial General Zone with a conditional use permit. The findings for the administrative permit must use objective standards, so no subjective standards. And, again, the city will have until the end of 2025 to undertake this amendment, and that should give staff, the planning commission, the city council enough time to engage the public and come up with those objective standards that everyone is comfortable with. The second future amendment is to revise the site planner review finding that the project does not adversely affect neighborhood character. And this, again, only applies to multifamily projects and only to height. So there are other reasons or that you would get a site planner review, and so this only applies to a site planner review for height and only for multifamily projects. And this was required to ensure approval certainty for multifamily projects so that they are not guessing once they go over 18 feet whether they would get an approval, as this would impact, again, their timeline and their, and make it more difficult and less likely that somebody would propose a multifamily project in the city. Again, timeline, end of 2025. So these will have a lot more public discussion before they were, they are implemented. And then the final future code amendment is related to a new housing program, related to ADUs. And this would be to allow up to two junior ADUs per single-family lot, and one of them would have to be deed restricted to low and moderate income. And the timeline for this is six months from the receipt of a comment from HCD, which we have not received yet, or within six months from the adoption of the housing element, whichever comes later. This is required because HCD requires cities to ensure that there are multifamily or rental opportunities throughout the city so that people that can't afford to buy a single-family house and to live in a low-density, single-family neighborhood would have the opportunity to live in that neighborhood by using one of the junior ADUs. So it's a fair housing issue. And finally, public notification. The revised housing element was available for review on the city's webpage, and that was consistently updated as we went through the different versions of the housing element. State law requires a seven-day public review process before resubmitting the revised draft to HCD. So every time we made revisions before HCD would consider it, we'd have to do a seven-day public review notice. Any comments were sent to HCD, and then they would provide comments. Notice of availability of the revised housing element was sent to 840 individuals and public agencies, published in the newspaper, and advertised on the city's social media platforms and the city's webpage. And there was a notice sent out by media informing the residents of the planning commission meeting to deny some of the code amendments that would be considered. All of the comments that were received on the housing element were incorporated and are included in the public participation description of the housing element. And staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt Resolution 24-59, recommending that the city council determine that the project is exempt from the California Quality Act, adopt general plan amendment number 20-001, adopting the 2021-2029 housing element, and adopt local coastal program amendment number 24-001 to amend the local coastal program, local implementation plan, and the land use plan. And finally, to adopt the zoning code amendment number 24-002 to amend Title 17 of the Malibu Municipal Code. And all of these amendments are necessary as required to implement the goals, objectives, and policies, and implementation measures in the, as set forth in the 2021-2029 general plan housing element. That concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Okay, I suggest we have public comment before questions. Okay, so we're going to open the public hearing. These were put together. Are they all separate? Rebecca, these were paper clipped together? Are they all separate?
They're all separate.
Okay. And how many, do we have any Zoom speakers? None?
There are no speakers with answers on Zoom.
Three speakers are the biggest thing that ever hit Malibu. Unbelievable. Okay. First speaker is Cindy Martin from Schmitzen Associates.
Good evening, Chair Mazza, Vice Chair Leonard, Commissioner Hill, Pete Smith. It's nice to see all of you tonight, and welcome, Ms. Tumari. I'm aware of all the work that staff, the commission, the city put into reaching the settlement and avoiding litigation, and everybody needs to be commended for this. Great job, sincerely. The city's crafted an excellent proposing, proposed housing element and affordable housing overlay. It's a great step forward, but it doesn't quite get us all the way there. The affordable overlay clusters affordable housing opportunities specifically to the four parcels with the density bonuses. And that's not compliant with AB 686 or HUD requirements. It's not considered a nondiscriminatory, inclusive housing opportunity. But to expand the overlay would be to expand density bonuses such as heights to 30 feet. And I think most Malibu residents wouldn't want that scattered throughout the neighborhood. The overlay doesn't address the 28 very low-income units. But without the density bonuses, affordable projects don't pencil out. They're not profitable for private developers, whether it's an ADU, a JADU, a zoning amendment. The maximum rents based on the housing element using 2021 rates range from $1,400 to $2,400 a month. That just doesn't work in Malibu. What makes more sense is to allocate a percentage of the city's transient occupancy tax revenue to affordable housing for various properties throughout the city with, coupled with the affordable overlay. This is currently being done in the city of Napa. Malibu's TOT revenues for the last fiscal, the last three fiscal years total five to $6.5 million a year. A percentage of those funds could be earmarked to an affordable rent subsidy. They're currently going into the general fund. And then that with zone amendments could allow affordability throughout the community, especially in the civic center, where you've got access to public, public transportation, grocery stores. This would work with the affordable overlay, and that would complete meeting the arena numbers. It would be a comprehensive program. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Paul Tantet?
Yes. Yes. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Pretty simply, I just feel it's really inappropriate for the residential care facilities to be allowed in a rural residential zone, if I'm understanding that correctly. It's all residential zones. I think it's really, especially some that are on private roads or have private gates and would have limitations, obviously it wouldn't be appropriate for the character of the neighborhood. And I'm just hoping that I'm not, that I'm getting that wrong, if that would be possible given this. That's all I just wanted to emphasize that. Thanks.
Before Ed speaks, I want to disclose that he passed out a picture of what Malibu's going to look like. He'll leave one of those for the staff.
Well, it's up to you to make sure it doesn't look like that and everybody else. I think what Joyce has done is excellent because it's set a standard base that we can work off of. My experience in housing is, goes way back. And I think there are five or six critical things that have to be approached. Number one, selecting a site without understanding the module of life that's going to go on it, i.e., are we talking about efficiency units? Are we talking about one bedrooms? Are we talking about two bedrooms? There has to be a spatial allocation. That isn't in the report. What do we allow under the state, under HUD? HUD accepts the breakdowns. You're talking about a one-bedroom unit that, let's say, is about 800 square feet. That's a big difference. And during the calculation as a developer, and I'll take that point right now, let's assume I'm the developer. I'm going to try to get as many units on there as I can, within the context of the square footage I'm allowed. But that's not going to work for us in Malibu. Somebody's got to break down, what is the, what is the requirement? Can we get away with mostly efficiency units? Can we get away with mostly one bedrooms? Do we need two bedrooms? What is that mix? Because that's going to tell me, as a translator, architecturally, of what am I working with? What is the size of this object? And until I do that, I really don't care about the sites that we presently have available because there's so many other constraints on those sites that will force my hand. For example, if you build today, the cost factors are unbelievable. I came up with a deficit each year for the city of over 2.5 million because construction costs, whenever we build a project, but let's talk about today. Construction costs, on an average, for most of the projects, will be in the range of about $800,000, including site development, septic systems, fire department access, square footage of the units. So before you know it, you really need a lot of money. Where is that coming from? No one in this group, including Joyce, has said to me, are we going to give the land on a leasehold for 60 years? Who's going to pay for the land? Where is the reimbursement? That has to go into the price. I can go on and on. So somebody needs to sit down and break down all this into what it really is. So if I have a piece of property, i.e., it's 20 units per acre, and by the way, it should not be higher than 20 in any case. There are many, many studies of that that show that 20 acres, 20 per acre gives us the opportunity to develop the landscape, the outside areas, and everything else. Okay, I've got a lot more to say.
Well, I have to ask you questions. We have three speakers.
Okay.
Luis will give you a minute. Can you fell out of sleep, Luis?
I'll try a minute.
Okay, can you fell out of sleep? That's two more minutes.
I get a minute after 56 years of being here? Okay.
You get almost double, Ed.
Okay, let me just explain. The model we need, or at least I feel you need as an architect and a planner, is we need to take what Joyce has done, break it down into what it really means. Give me one of the sites. Not me. Hire somebody to develop a scheme for one of the sites, the way they're talking. Don't allow 30-foot-high. It's ridiculous. We're not, people, we're going to tear this place to pieces on that tower at the school, okay? We don't need 30 feet to make this successful. But first, the modulation of the U. How many units? Go on and on and on. You all know, how in the world can you even talk about this being the same as other cities? We don't have a sewer system. That means we need land to put it. There's 24, figure it out, 2,400, 1,250 gallons per day per unit. Multiply that by 79. It's a huge number. Yes. So does that mean that every, all these projects have got to be along civic center way so we can plug into the system? That automatically forces the hand that those are the only places that can take this impact from the wastewater. I can go on and on. Anyway, I don't agree with Joyce at all on the mixed use. I think a concept for low-income housing should be, should be put in, should be slipped into other uses. There should be four, very few low-income housing structures packed together. They should be distributed throughout the community. It's ADUs. They should be distributed and developed in whatever commercial we might have in the future. So I don't think that we have, we can weave it in. I don't think we have to say, Joe Blow lives over there. We know he lives there because it's low income. That's not the architecture we need. That's not our community. Okay, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that'll close the public hearing, and we're back to the table for questions. First.
Can I have a word about process?
That's, that's what I want to go through. So you want to ask from this?
I just wanted to have, talk about how we're going to handle all this tonight.
Well, they gave us a, a staff responses. Did you get this? On how you handle it?
No, I did not get that. I, I just wanted to say that, you know, there, where are we here talking from?
Somebody's got their phone on.
There are just a lot of nooks and crannies to all this. And my thought is that as we go through it, if we, sure, if we find consensus on something, great, but if, let's not get stuck on any one thing because once we kind of get through it more, when we come back, we might be able to have more perspective on how to handle the tougher things.
Yeah, I think the other thing, too, is like, we're kind of up against a wall here right now with the timeline. Am I correct in that, Joyce? I mean, I don't know how much of this is going to get changed that much between now and, it's not coming back to us before it goes to council. You know, so we're going to probably make some recommendations to you to make some minor changes. I mean, I don't know if there's anything that's, like, any, I was, the first thing I would say is, from anything that we heard from the speakers today, like Cindy, correct? You know, she brought up, was it, I wrote down, AB 686. I know she sent some stuff in earlier today, but like, does that weigh on you and your analysis of that, of being compliant with that and the clustering that's referenced?
We are certain that the housing element before you meets the statutory requirements and meets all of the state law, and HCD has agreed with us and sent a letter indicating if the city adopts the housing element that you have before you, it meets all statutory requirements.
Okay, is, can I ask her another question?
Yes.
In, in the conversation with HCD, is there anything that they really gave us any wiggle room on at all, period? Or is it just more like, do this, this is how it's going to be dictated? Because it's very, I'll also say, like, out there in the realm of social media, people are posting things like, this is somehow being like, you know, thought up by the city council and the planning commission. Is it like, this is how we want, you know, to have more low-income housing in Malibu, and we want to upzone all these places because we want all these low-income housing units in all of our communities? And I don't think that that's what's going on here. It's more that we're being compliant with state law.
And you are, are correct. This is, all of the items are requested by HCD. This is, all of the items are requested by HCD, needed to comply with state housing element law. And no, we back and forth with them and, and tried to, you know, not necessarily disagree with them, but tried to find alternative solutions to what they were requesting. And they were pretty firm in their direction, and they gave us and said, this is, this is what we have to do.
Joyce, the, the reporting on other cities comes up with a lot of different things than we have. Are they specific? This is the law, or this is what Malibu has to do? Is there, is there a czar there? Because every city would have to be the same if, if that was their law.
So cities can, so HCD says, city, you must promote housing mobility, for instance. And so different cities have chosen different ways to do that. And so, for instance, and Veronica Tam, who is on the call, she'd be very good to ask that question about the other cities, because she's, she's worked on about 100 different other cities' housing elements. But for, like, for the junior ADU, the deed restricted junior ADU, we were required, and so shared housing, we were required to develop housing programs to promote housing mobility and to increase rental opportunities. And so some cities did that by increasing the density in their single-family neighborhoods. They increased the, the density. Some cities chose to allow commercial buildings to be converted to residential uses. So there's a whole variety of things that other cities have utilized. And staff felt that the, the two that are proposed, promoting shared housing and the junior ADU, deed restricted, were the best option for the city.
Well, for example, we don't have an ADU law. So we could, we have one proposed, and we don't have any rent control. If we went in and said, there's going to be 400 ADUs in Malibu, or 600, or whatever, 4,000, depending on how it's, it's done, if we said, okay, they're all rent-controlled, doesn't that solve the problem? 79 out of 4,000? And is, and is another city doing that? There's another city saying, we're going to rent control ADUs, since we don't have any, any rent control. I want to get...
Have I rephrased your question?
Yeah.
That was something I wanted to touch on. Are we making, going with this recommendation because we don't have a ratified ADU ordinance that could have helped us get into compliance?
And no. If, if we did have a ratified ADU ordinance, our requirement would be to amend it.
Okay, so, so if we amended what we have, we don't even have a junior ADU, and we have that in here, why can't we say rent control? That takes the onus off of these big projects. I mean, if other cities can do it, why can't we do it? Is my question.
Chair Mazza, are you suggesting that the, that the city should institute rent control?
Well, essentially, what the state is doing to us is saying, rent control, they're saying, you got to have certain number of units that are $1,400 a month, or whatever the low number is, that's rent control. And so if we say, well, how about another 50 that are ADUs that are rent-controlled? Why do we have to build these?
So the ADU law is different from housing element law. And so the ADU law has their own regulations and their own laws as to what the cities have to allow ADUs.
But they don't, but they, I know for fact, cities can rent control ADUs.
Certainly that, the city can institute rent control. I, I don't, I don't know, I haven't done any research on rent control and AD unit, ADU units. But restricting, allowing a second junior ADU, if it's deed restricted, is not a, I would not consider that rent control.
Well, call it, so what else?
You have a choice. You could build it, or you can't. If you built it, then it would have to be deed restricted, and you're, you're already entitled to one, so...
But one of my question is, if you said, an ADU, a junior ADU, the second junior ADU is limited to X amount of rent, deed restricted, how is that any different than any other residential unit in the town?
How is it different?
Yeah, why can't a regular ADU have the same provision?
So, I mean, if, if the, if the city council wanted to institute rent control, I guess that is entirely up to them, but that's, that's a whole different program.
Well, let me ask you this. What is the difference between rent control and deed-restricted rent?
May I answer that? Yes. So there's Costa Hawkins, which controls actual rent control. Cities like the city of West Hollywood have rent control. That can only apply on properties, developments that are 1979 and prior build years. Deed restricted is for current new properties.
Okay, let's call it deed restricted.
Yes.
How much money you pay restriction?
And I can...
Why can't we do that?
I'll opine on that a little bit. It's, the problem with that is that we're not only looking at affordability, we're looking at barriers to development, and the, we need to be able to build or allow the building of XYZ. That's what HCD is requiring. So if we make it where a deed-restricted ADU is the law, as you're questioning about, HCD may come back. The other problem is, we've had this plan approved 99% by HCD. So we don't know what they're going to say if we came back to them with that, but one of the issues I could foresee is that if you put barriers to development on whatever ideas we're putting in here, to the point where a homeowner says, I can't afford to build that, it's 300,000, 400,000 to build it, I need to recoup my costs, they may consider that a barrier to development, which they're trying to build more housing units. That's HCD's point.
But, as Ed Niles pointed out, the, the barrier to development in Malibu is our land cost more than it costs in Compton. I mean, basically, that's it. And so if you already own the land, and you can build an ADU, you've removed the barrier of the cost of the land, period. It's gone.
It's not the land cost, it's the development of the, the structure.
Development and land cost. You've got your road, you got your, you got your water, you got your, you got everything else, you just plunk an ADU. You can go buy an ADU and, and have them drop it on your property.
I mean, yes, but we're talking about HCD that's become very, very strict on these things, so...
I know, and, and I know, but what I'm saying is, that land, lot A, B, and C, or whatever it's called, is an escrow for $15 million, okay? That's a lot of ADUs. A lot of ADUs. And it doesn't destroy the city. Now, I'm just, you know, obviously, we got presented with this, this, and said, you got a day to approve it. And this is the future of Malibu. And I look at, you know, you were talking earlier, and this is another question, you were talking earlier about diversifying where these things are. I forgot what the...
Hang on, before you change the subject...
No, no, I'm talking.
Can I just say, can we memorialize that we have a question about ADUs that we need to get back to?
Yes. Okay.
Go on.
We're looking at a general plan that says, the development of Malibu shall be, on the west side, west of Malibu Canyon Road, shall be more rural than east of Malibu Canyon Road. And then we're talking about dumping 111 condos next to 400 condos, all in one spot, right across from Paradise Cove. And no diversification anywhere else, except maybe someday, some behind a shopping center. So how is that diversification of geography, or whatever the term you used? How did, how did we get away with that? Saying they're all going to be in one spot?
The state law supersedes.
The state law says you can't do that.
I would just remind the commission that the affordable housing overlay zone is not a new, is not a new program. That was approved in 2018, and it's been in our last two housing elements.
Yeah, right. And it was, but, you, what is the language you were telling us about you have to spread it out in the community? It's a requirement according, this wasn't there in 2013, when we passed it.
Right.
That property wasn't built on. It's been, been able to be built on since 2013.
Most of the, the, most of, quite a bit of the items in the housing element are new, in the sense of, HCD in the past required cities to show that they had land to accommodate affordable housing. This time, we not only have to show land that we have, enough land to accommodate affordable housing, but we have to promote that affordable housing. One of the programs in the housing element is that the city, on a regular basis, has to contact nonprofit housing developments and let them know about the parcels that are available. And so it's a more proactive housing element that we have ever required in the past.
No, I understand that, but I'm asking a specific question. You talked about how the new requirements say you have to diversify in the community. Yet, we don't diversify anything in the community under this plan. How do we get around that new law? How, how did we get around that new law? Or was there just somebody who wants to develop that property?
How did we get around the...
You, maybe you should repeat it, but what?
Can I rephrase it to her?
Yes.
So what, what John's bringing up is, so you're referencing the properties that are near, I'm going to call it Zuma as in PCH, right? And those are like a cluster.
Right.
But the state law is saying that you cannot cluster them. So how are we getting away with clustering those there? That's what the question is.
Cluster is the word I needed.
Yes. So we, we are utilizing our ADUs to meet, to help us meet our low, lower-income units. And so ADUs are an important component of the housing element to meet our RENA numbers. Without ADUs, we would not be able to meet...
So the question, let me, let me, let me ask that.
Yeah.
What ADUs?
All the existing ones in the city.
There are no ADUs in Malibu.
Guest houses, the ones that are built, you might not...
No, guest houses you can't live in, so...
Second units.
Yes. And so as part of the housing element, we determine how many ADUs had been approved and built. And so keep in mind, this is for the planning period, a planning period from 2021 to 2029. So we're looking at all the ADUs that were built during that period, and then projected out, based on how many that had been constructed to date, how many more could we expect to 2029? And so the city, the state, the city SCAG allows, SCAG came up with a formula to determine what, it was, is a formula that, that indicated a certain percentage of cities' ADUs could be deemed affordable. So without having deed restrictions or anything like that, it was just a certain percentage and an assumption, SCAG came up with the formula, HCD has accepted that, and so that's the formula we're using to make an assumption that a certain percent of our ADU units would meet our lower-income...
So, so we're assuming, and they're assuming, that somebody's going to rent an ADU that you can't afford to build because the land's free for $1,400 a month? Is that what we're, that's what they're telling us?
No, I think what they're assuming...
Without any deed, without any restrictions on how much you can charge.
Chair. What they're, what they're assuming is that we're getting credit for existing buildings in the city and the potential of future buildings, based on how many were built over a certain time period. And the state is saying, we're not going to get into the minuscule details of how much rent and all of those things, we're just going to say, you know, call, I don't know what the percentage is, Joyce could tell you that.
No, I understand that, I understand that. The, the, the whole point of RENA is to build low-income housing. And basically, what they're saying is, same as Compton, charge same rent as Compton, we'll count it. There's no, no restrictions at all on these...
So maybe...
I know that a room in a, a mobile home in, in, in Point Dune Club costs about $1,500 for a room, okay? Minimum. So that, that's what I'm, I'm trying to, my real question is, are these real rules, or they aren't? And, and, and when they say, lower the cost of entry, and, and we say, okay, free land, that's, and that's, question is lowering the cost of entry? And then, what I, what I really don't understand is, this clustering requirement that's not required, and the fact that a builder can go in and build 111 units on a property, and only 20% of them are low-income, and the rest can charge whatever he feels like? And this is, this is going to provide low-income housing? And then there's no, no restriction on what he can charge for the rest of them?
Our Chair Mazza, Lilly Rudolph, who is with Rincon, who prepared the housing element, had a couple of items she would like to answer some of your questions about ADU. So can you connect her?
I'm on the end, Joyce.
All right. So Lilly's on, on the phone. Go ahead, Lilly, this, this is Lilly Rudolph from Rincon Consultants.
Sure. Chair Mazza, so a couple of clarifications. The, the deed-restricted program that's described in the housing element refers to JADUs above and beyond the law that can be deed-restricted. And this is for, this is, it's an allowance to allow up to two JADUs per single-family lot, and at least one JADU must be rent-restricted to lower moderate-income households. So there's an incentive to build two, one of which needs to be deed-restricted. We can't deed-restrict ADUs that are built within state law.
Why not?
Why, Lilly, why not? Certain cities in California have, LA, for example, have restrictions on buildings, that say you can't charge more than X amount of rent. Why can't Malibu?
This is Veronica, if I can just jump in a little bit. I think the city attorney mentioned before, deed restriction is a little bit different than rent control, but let's talk, talk about deed restriction on ADUs. State laws specifically say that a local jurisdiction is not allowed to require ADUs that are built under state law to be deed-restricted for a particular rent. But you can incentivize, in order, in exchange for deed restriction, a lot of jurisdictions do provide incentives in exchange for deed restriction for ADUs that are built under state law. Covert City does that, Pasadena does that, I'm sure Long Beach does that, Long Beach has that as well. Many jurisdictions do have that incentive.
What incentive?
What we are doing is an incentive, similar, but not for units that are built under state law, because the state is telling us that in order to disperse more affordable housing opportunities in, in the lower-density neighborhoods, we need to incentivize more. And so what we are saying, what we are doing is similar to what the city of Santa Monica and the city of Beverly Hills are doing in complying with this housing mobility, promoting more opportunities and lower income. Both the city of Beverly Hills and Santa Monica do allow for an additional junior ADU like what you are doing. So that's, we are only deed restricting, we're basically saying that if you want to build another one... We're basically saying that if you want to build another one, more than what the state law allows you to do, we will allow you to do it, however, you would need to deed restrict that. And so that's a little different than de restricting every ADUs.
Okay, I understand that. Let me ask you another question, though.
Okay.
We we are talking about this one particular property, 110 units, and only 20% of them, I assume, are deed restricted somehow. But you can deed restrict 50% of a junior ADUs.
Um, and that's actually not exactly what we are saying to either. What we are saying is this one particular property can accommodate X number of units. If they do provide 20% as affordable housing, then they will get by right approval under state law. It doesn't limit the project to have only 20% affordable units. Many projects, many affordable projects probably do come in with at least 40, 80%, depending on what you know, what the the owner would want to do. But it doesn't mean that you will ultimately only get 20%. There is that potential that you'll get more than 20%.
Well, that's my question. Could we say 50%?
That we cannot because that's what states specifically asked us to to meet state law, which is the minimum requirement. And so what the state is asking is you cannot require more than the state is requiring them to do, but again, you can incentivize them in in some other ways or you can encourage them to do it. And the developer may choose to do something different. So the 20% we do have to change to meet state law, but again, you can do other mechanisms to encourage it to include.
No, no, I just want to finish this.
I'm about to go home.
Go home.
Can I just say?
You have to be recognized by the chair. He is next year after that.
I'm trying to help you.
You don't need to. I will finish this question and then you can ask and then Drew is recognized, then you're recognized. You are saying that the state says the the developer, you can't require more than 20%, but you can give him more incentives to 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 build more more, but you can't require him to have more low income housing. That seems backwards to me, but is that really what you're saying that that?
So if I can help.
Okay, so could we say, okay, you get 20%, but less houses?
It's because, again, this goes back to incentivizing housing. So the 50% is not a realistic number for a developer in terms of their monetary value. So it is more likely, and this is what the state is thinking, it is more likely that a developer will choose the 20% and actually build the units.
In Malibu, it is, of course. Okay, Drew, you're next.
This might be for Tyler. For the maximum density on the, let's say, the one property over by Zumares, what is the we have a certain unit requirements that we're that we have to do in regards to accommodate different types of families. What are some of the specs of these units? How many square feet, plate height, that type of thing? Mix?
Go ahead, I'll enjoy a sentence. Okay, so so there are no requirements in terms of what size the units need to be?
What'd you guys see your calculations are based upon to get to?
That 20 dwelling units an acre? It's an acre, so it's 20 dwelling units an acre.
But I. Look, the question is, is it an 800 square foot unit? Is it a 1,500 square foot unit? Like, how where where is that coming from? And then how could you go to 27 units or is this also getting to the height thing?
Yeah, that's where I go with the nuts, yes.
So we had a conversation here a long time ago about, you know, the height of a building with the educational thing over here and that they made it taller. But nobody could provide any data that kids get a better education with the room with a taller ceiling. So what we want to know is how we come up with the getting to this 30 feet, right? Does it is there a minimum requirement for a ceiling height for a low income unit?
Or what what you guys used, I you've come up with a number based upon the part the lot sizes, but it could be scaled back quite a bit to be less, you know, impactful.
So I can address this question. Your building code is what's going to set the standards for height in a unit. 30 feet, though, will allow three stories.
But can't you build three stories and 24 feet flat roof? You just have a low ceiling.
No, no.
But but let me ask you this. Our code, our our municipal code says you need X size for, excuse me, one person at a time, you need X size for an apartment, you need X size for a house, minimum 800 square feet, et cetera. Does this totally negate that? For example, in Japan, you can build a 500 square, well, you can build a 200 square foot apartment in Japan, okay? So can a guy build 20 200 square foot apartments and 63,000 square foot condos? Is that possible? Because the way I read your staff report was it's all up to the builder.
Or what a lot of people are doing is they're shrinking down the units and also doing a mix where they're mostly studio studio units to get more density. And I'm trying to grasp how that's all works in regards to this proposal.
Do you want to ask?
Lilly, do you want to weigh in on this? I I think the the current proposal does not require, as Ed was saying, a a minimum amount of two bedrooms and one bedroom is the question you're asking, right? There was no. On the chart, it does show that we're required to have a certain mix. I think it was based upon.
Very low, low, moderate.
It was all based upon income level, but not for you not it had nothing to do with size, it just had to do with income level. That's right.
The other question on that is, I would imagine that there's a correlation between a number and a amount of bedrooms, right? Where there might be like one unit that's 1,500 bucks for a one bedroom, but then a two bedroom unit is how much? You know, it's not like a size requirement, right?
But for a developer, for a developer, they're going to be basically going as small as possible and to maximize the unit count.
Not necessarily, they want to make sure that they're rented.
In Malibu, if you're low income, I I could rent out 100 units tomorrow morning at those prices. I walk around Pepperdine with a sign, I'm holding up a sign.
So why don't you buy it and build it?
Yeah, I I'll build 110 units that, you know, if they're going to do 400 square feet for 20% of them. Come on.
John.
I'm with you. I think that there's some kind of a minimum in there that we're we're missing here. There's got to be some size that.
Can we make those requirements on size requirements? Nope.
No, because that's also dictated by the building code. We have building codes that mandate these kind of things. So you could not build a unit that was 10 by 10. I mean, we have building codes that set these things out, so.
Yeah, but people people build 450 square foot units all day long and convert two bedroom apartments into two units all day long.
Yes.
It is allowable in LA City on a 6,000 square foot lot to build 17 units.
Correct, but this is Malibu that we're trying to focus on here.
17 units on a 6,000 square foot lot.
One of the reasons the height was set to 30 feet here is because they're trying to hit the density of 27 unit dwelling units per acre. And so.
17 for 600 square feet.
And all it's required is 20.
Easily hit that.
You have to get the rest of the building code in Malibu. You have to compliance with permeability, a lot of different things here, landscape, all these different things.
That's the question.
Still come into compliance with this project. Is that correct, Joyce?
You're talking building code and then you're talking Malibu municipal code. Building code is a state thing that we adopt. Is this program eliminating the Malibu municipal code requirements and the LIP requirements for housing?
No, it is not. I think there are size limits or minimums, I guess, for single family house, but I don't believe there is any for multifamily. Tyler was going to check that.
I got to verify that.
He was going to Tyler was going to confirm that.
I think I think also too, you got to keep in mind that this.
Some perspective here, everybody. We're giving guidance to council. We're we're talking about about one issue every 20 minutes here. We want to get through this. I have probably 30 questions or observations of things that I want to get in the record. I think what council needs is us to weigh these things and talk about these things. We're not going to come to an agreement probably on any one thing tonight, right? We're going to give you going to give you stuff to chew on.
No, I know, we are making recommendations tonight and we're going to have consensus.
Well, then then we've got to get through some stuff and I have a ton of stuff here that I want to get into.
Then let's hang on a second. I think we probably have consensus that there is a minimum size of units. Is that is that true?
Yeah.
I think that what council ought to work backwards from is how whatever that minimum size of unit is on a per acre size, right, with density. We I think that you should provide better analysis to council on how you come up with, how are you going to do the 20 acre 20 units per acre or the 27 that you're looking to incentivize? So if you could get better information on that, that may be helpful. I think it's helpful for everybody to understand, too.
Well, let me let me ask a question. You're talking the whole hundred, the whole 111. The only control you have is over the the 20%. Is that correct? They could build if if you say 20% have to be 10 of them have to be one bedroom, 10 of them have to be two bedroom, then they could build palaces on all the rest, right?
So let me loop in Lilly or Veronica again, our housing element experts. I am not aware that cities can on our affordable units projects could require them to be a minimum size. Lilly or Veronica can could.
Yeah, this is Veronica. There are some jurisdictions that have minimum size units, however, that is typically considered a constraint to housing development and usually HCD does not like seeing it. And if we add that right now, they will reevaluate the the compliance status of our housing element. So that's just, I'll give you an example. We removed the minimum unit size requirement for La Conyada because they had a minimum size unit for them multifamily units and that was considered a severe constraint to multifamily development in the city and we we moved it as part of the housing element.
Is there a state law on how how many people you can pack into a room?
Yes.
The the number of people is based on the health and safety code and building code, which is usually very generous. However, if it is an affordable housing unit, there are there is occupation occupation occupancy standards. Usually is two person per bedroom plus one extra person. That's very typical occupancy standards used by many state and federal programs and also, I believe, in is in most of the apartment leases in California.
Okay, I'd like to ask Ed Ed a question on that. And then you're next. You got to come up to Mike, Ed, it's a law.
It's the law.
I'm really old and I can tell you that the state has had a housing act for as long as I have lived. It came out of the Second World War and HUD has a housing act. Gives you the minimum size rooms, height of the ceiling, minimum. It gives you everything you could possibly think of to generate a unit. The reason for it was exactly what you're talking about. It has to do with is the minimum requires so bums developers couldn't put you in a room that was six by eight and call it a bedroom. So a bedroom usually had a minimum clearance of nine feet. You had a six foot bed, you had three foot walk around it. So there is a logic to all this. And what you need to do is hire an architect to work with this group to generate all these numbers. That's what our entire life is about. What is the dimension? If you want to go beyond that thing, it is a standard. HUD has a standard, look it up. The statement for the I can pull it out here and I'm not going to waste my time or yours, but the point is here. This is the what is called the HQS, which is a housing quality standard. All it says is, right, program is to provide decent, safe and sanitary housing as an at affordable cost to low income family. Housing quality standards help HUD and other local public housing authorities, PHAs, accomplish the goal by defining standards. Well, they've already defined it. So we need to take those standards and establish the bottom line. The problem is, I think all of you are talking about is we have to translate, we have to move the verbiage into a physical form so people can understand the impact of what we mean by 20 or 30 units per acre. New York City is 40 to 100 per acre, okay? But they're high rises. Malibu is basically about maybe eight units per acre at the worst.
Thank you.
So now you're going to go up there. So you've got to see what that's like and stop talking about it.
Okay, so so can we get consensus on having a minimum standard based on HUD or some other standard?
I think that they should provide the provide that information to the city. The reason why I don't think that we should put that in that strictly in the code is that that's ultimately going to be an up to developer to decide and they're going to have to do that based on market, right? If they make a. Chair, I'd like to give a little guidance here as well. Affordable housing projects, all of them that I've ever worked on are financed through the low income housing tax credit program, which is run by the state. It's from federal government. But the to qualify to get those tax credits, you have to go through this whole process. When you apply, the Tax Credit Allocation Committee sets requirements for the minimum unit size. So none of these, none of these are going to be built unless they comply. And I'll just say for the record what they are. One bedroom is a minimum of 450 feet. Two bedrooms are 700, three bedrooms are 900 and four bedrooms are 1,000 minimum.
Okay, I suggest we put those in our recommendations. Is that consensus?
What our city attorney is advising us to do is not to put those in there, knowing that anyone that's going to build these low income units is going to use that financing mechanism together.
I highly doubt that. I mean, if you sit down with a piece of paper.
It's it's you can put them in there as a guideline.
Okay.
You should you should you should not do below what is the minimum standard.
And that's and he just read us the minimum standard. I think we should recommend that the city establish the minimum standards and he just read it to us.
I would recommend that you just take a vote on that and then.
Okay, let's take a vote.
Commissioner Smith say something.
Yes.
Okay, here's the deal. This is written in stone and there's not much that we're going to do about it because really council doesn't give a damn what we think about this. They're up against the wall. This has taken too long. If we don't do it, hang on, if we don't do this, then the state's going to come back to us, just like we had to have somebody else write our LCP. The water regional water quality came after us, we had to put a sewer in. Now you're going to screw around with this and then we're not going to get it done. And nobody cares about how many ideas we have about this because there aren't any ideas. Joyce has spelled it out. Ed gave us a couple of ideas and that's great, Mr. Naz, and I appreciate it. The 30 foot thing, you can't go up, go down. But here's the thing, this is done. The council is going to vote on this. This is just this is just for us to kind of talk about for five minutes. There's nothing that we're going to say that's going to change a damn thing in here.
I just want to comment on that.
It's done. It's a done deal.
I want to comment on that. There is a law that requires us to review this. There is a law and it's right in here, this schedule.
We did, you got it. You reviewed it, but council's going to do this next week. It's over, John. It's over.
You you can you can do like you always do and just say. You, you can, you can do like you always do and just say, I just approve it, they can change it.
It's approved. They brought this to us as, as just a, just for us to talk about. There's nothing to talk about. Council is gonna pass this thing at the drop of a hat and get it up to the state so we can keep going here.
That is council's prerogative.
Well, it is their prerogative. We got appointed, we have no say here. We're, we're just, we're just talking for no reason.
Did you?
We have no say.
You didn't read a single word.
It doesn't matter, John, it's already done. We already did this four years ago. Four years ago.
Guys, this is getting personal.
Shut off your speaker, okay? We are required to give recommendations, recommendations, not change the, the document, recommendations to the city council. They can decide to take them or not. If, if we have the attitude like you do, don't even bother reading it, it's all done, take five minutes, then why are we here? Why are these people here, okay?
Because it's already done.
It's required by the law.
Fine.
Okay?
It's done.
It's done, okay?
The chair?
Yes. And we're gonna take a vote after you speak.
Well, I was just gonna say, I, I think that there's, we need to focus this conversation here. Um, I think that's what Craig was gonna say as well. Craig has some itemized different points that I think we could go through in a more timely manner. I would make the recommendation that you kind of yield the mic to him so we can get through those.
Okay, but what I'd like to do, and you can vote this down. We just discussed one item, we want to get done with it. Do we want to recommend that the city council provide the guidelines that were just read as a recommendation? And, and, and I, and that's-
What I think we should do is we have some experts on the phone here that do this for a lot of different cities. And if we can, I forget the woman's name. If she says that's something that's common with a lot of cities in their housing element, then absolutely. If it's not, then I don't think that we should make this more complicated.
Council has four weeks to ratify this. They're not gonna hire an arch, they can't hire an architect.
They don't need to hire an architect, but they might be, care enough about Malibu to say, if we're gonna build low-income units, we're gonna build ones that follow HUD or whatever it is, okay? They might care, they might care. You don't, but they might, okay?
It's not that I don't care, Chair. It, the, the situation is it's already spelled out. There's nothing for us to re spell out here.
Then leave.
Chair, can we take a five-minute recess, please, so I can use the restroom? Thank you.
Okay. Five minutes and we'll be back at, uh, nine 50. Okay, we're reopening the, whoops, we're reopening the hearing now. Well, I just want to make a statement. We're here to make recommendations to the city council. We can be here until 4:30 in the morning to gab, okay? So let's, we're gonna move it along and we're gonna try to give you as many points as we can, as recommendations. We're gonna take consensus votes as we go, so we're not gonna repeat them at the end. And, uh, so I'm first calling on Drew.
Okay. I wanted to ask a question of the city attorney and then make a recommendation to Chair Mazza. In these hearings, basically commissioners are, wanna put stuff on the record. And I've been told that basically our votes are our record. And I'd like to ask Chair Mazza to limit topics that are just ideas and thoughts and opinions and have us try to just get resolution. So, could you please?
Yes, your vote is your record. And then as to limiting time, the commission has the ability, and I've mentioned it before, that we're run by Robert's Rules of Orders, to make a motion to limit either time on topics, overall time on a, a matter. Make a motion that each commissioner gets X number of minutes to speak on things. You, you can make a motion on many different things like that, but that would be the, the procedural way to do that.
Okay.
Do any of the other commissioners want to chime in on any of that?
I just want to keep moving forward.
Okay, yeah, and, and as far as putting things in the record, the, the record is for a permit or something like that, so you can understand what's, what's happening in the, in the future. We're, now we're making recommendations, they are not law, they are not changing anything. So, I'd like to move them along. If, if there's consensus, the last issue we talked to is, should there be a minimum size? I, I mean, a specified size on units. And I'm calling for a yes or no consensus. Tyler, Skylar?
My, my response to that would be yes, but that would be contingent on hearing from an expert as to whether or not that's something that happens in a lot of other cities with their housing elements. If it is, then yes. If it's not, or if it's gonna cause potentially more challenges for Joyce and others that are working on this, then I wouldn't do it.
Okay, so who's the expert?
That would be, I believe, Veronica, are you available to answer that question of how many other cities have placed size restrict, or maximums? Or I guess it would be minimums in this case on, and HCD has approved that in their housing element.
Our media specialist is checking to see if we might have a technical issue that just began. His personal Zoom screen just froze. We're checking to see whether that is an issue with the Zoom meeting itself. Lily, if you, or Veronica, whichever of you is responding to this, if you would unmute and respond if you are present in the Zoom meeting and able to.
He went to go check on something.
Hi, this is Lily at Rincon. I, the video froze for a while, but I think I'm back.
All right, Lily, do you want to answer that question or Veronica?
I didn't hear the question, I, we were kicked out for-
Okay. The question is relative to establishing minimum sizes of units. Is that something that HCD has approved where other cities? Or is that, or has that put the city at risk of not being approved?
It would, it would absolutely put us at risk of not being certified.
Now, can I ask a question of you? Uh, our attorney read us the minimum requirements for, was it HUD?
No, that was tax credit minimums.
Tax credit minimums. Government established minimums, we're not making them up. In other words, we, what we're trying to ask is, if we don't have any minimums, could a builder walk in there and build a 200-square-foot one-bedroom?
The, your builder would need to comply with building code and any other regulations.
Chair, I, I, I don't think that we should put this in there. I think we should move to the next topic.
This is Veronica, and, and I would also chime in. Uh, yes, um, you may have low-income housing tax credit that has a minimum, but low-income housing tax credit is in, in fact, providing funding to subsidize the housing. And therefore, if you put in a minimum, uh, that, that using low-income housing tax credit, it's not the same market, like, economic, you know, feasibility as a market rate building, um, in general. So I, again, uh, we would recommend not adding it right now, especially because the entire housing element and all the standards has already been reviewed by the state. And changing this would jeopardize the state's, um, the compliance status from the state.
Okay, what's our next topic?
All right, I'm, I'm gonna take over here a bit and try to move it-
Now, this is a topic?
It's a topic.
And we're gonna limit the, the discussion, okay? So let's go.
Okay, the plan is required to analyze constraints. You guys done a great job of analyzing the governmental constraints. There's a huge, huge elephant in the room on the non-governmental constraints that has not been addressed at all, which is that Malibu is absolutely constrained by having a single arterial access. We're in a very high fire hazard severity zone. We have proven evidence from the Woolsey Fire that evacuation on PCH already takes much too long. The simplistic evacuation plan implemented since then would make it marginally quicker, but we still have the same number of cars and people, same time, same width of the highway.
Be more brief, okay?
And, uh, summer beach days are a parking lot already. We have a extraordinary physical constraint here in this city with this artery that makes us unique compared to anywhere else. This has not been acknowledged in the element at all. It's, the word evacuation is literally appears once in passing in the whole thing. I did a keyword search. Um, so, and in fact, 7.4 point, page 36, says, "The section ends with 'the city's environmental constraints are well documented in the general plan', but this is not at all in the general plan. The way the city is laid out, this linear access, we cannot accommodate this massive extra density." So I think as a matter of practical, practicality in looking at this, we should be looking at the constraints that we, that we're working in and trying to limit them to what is required. Like, for example, when they want the 20, uh, units minimum per acre or-
20 or 27?
20, we, we need to go with the 20, not the 27. We need to go with the bare, you know, and, and there are things here like parking, for example.
So, those requirements are all based on, that's like parcel contingent, based on how you get to these units. So Joyce, if the recommendation from you guys are like, the understanding is that if a developer were to come in to want this, to do the 20% low-income units on the parcel, they would be looking at approximately 20 acre, 20 units per acre for that parcel. That's where that thought processes come from?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
That is, 20, 20, 20 dwelling units an acre is a minimum.
Okay, and where does the 27 come from?
So there is another section in the affordable housing overlay that establishes a maximum. I want to say it's like 1,900 and if, if, pull up that, that code. So it establishes a minimum and a maximum amount. So that is existing, that was always in the code and we weren't proposing to change that.
It's a maximum of 1,000 units per acre?
No, uh, no, 20, uh-
27?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, if I can just-
20 dwelling units an acre is a minimum. And if you want to get affordable housing, it's 20 dwelling units an acre because we want, we need the affordable housing units. Uh, and then the maximum, have you, did you find that, Allison?
One unit for 16.
Can we make that 20?
One unit for 16 is there too?
Um, so the, um, affordable housing overlay now requires to have a maximum density of one dwelling unit per 1,613 square feet of lot area. And I think that if you calculate that out, I'm trying to remember where the, the 16-
May I continue?
That, the seven?
It's 27.
Yeah, so it comes up to that, that's how you come up with the 27.
Right.
We're getting into the weeds on the deck chair on the Titanic here. 7.422 says, quote, "State law prohibits the imposition of building standards that are not necessitated by local geographic, climatic, or topographic conditions." To me, the implication there is that if we have geographic, topographic conditions, special things, as we do, we're within our, our right to impose exceptional restrictions or exceptions to, to these state laws. My, I have a lot of thoughts about where we could move this around at the margins on, on little items, but I think my take on this, is the council should be recognizing the factual truth of this community, for the community, and understanding that, yeah, we want to provide affordable housing, but that the way to get there is not by increasing density by a significant order of magnitude here in this town. You know, maybe, maybe at the margins a little bit, we could, you know, accommodate another multi-use how, how, uh, unit or whatever. But if we're getting towards affordability, it is gonna have to be something like rent control or, cuz otherwise we just have, we're, we're asking for dozens or hundreds of lives to be lost on this highway the next time there's a fire and we're too dense. I mean, already on the weekend and, and most summer weekdays, you can't even go out on the highway cuz it's a parking lot. How are we gonna increase the density of this town by another 50%?
Craig, what do you propose to recommend to the council?
I recommend that they go with the absolute minimum numbers on this, these things. And in fact, I, you know, if it- And in fact, you know, if it were me and I were running it, I would say, here's what we can do and here's what we can accommodate. And if HCD doesn't like that, take us to court and we'll show you the facts. We'll show you how our city is laid out.
I'm just going to say that that'd be a very bad.
Do we have consensus to recommend the minimum density?
To take this to court.
Well.
No, 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 we're not discussing.
Guys, guys, guys.
Stop, both of you, shut off your mics. We are not discussing tactics. Here, we are discussing our recommendations. Is, do we have consensus to recommend a minimum density allowed under whatever they're doing?
They were saying 20 is what the.
Is that, is there consensus on that?
I think the consensus is that, I think I could speak for everybody up here. We want this to be as minimally invasive to all of our neighborhoods as possible.
Is that consensus?
That's your consensus.
We have any objection to that? That's one of, that's our first recommendation.
Okay, make this as minimally invasive to neighborhoods as possible.
And I think part of that, just to put the bow on it, that means looking at the constraints and recognizing that there is this huge physical non-governmental constraint that is just not on the table.
Just real quick, procedurally, we've got to have the actual recommendation, not add-ons. Well, I know, but there's add-ons there, so.
We're off onto something else now. We're off onto something else now.
We need some clarification for staff.
Can I ask a quick question? The recommendation is to do the minimum density possible under the, under their regulations?
What I heard the recommendation is, is to make this as minimally invasive to neighborhoods as possible.
Which is pretty big for SFAF.
Minimum density.
I think it's vague, because I think in all of our minds up here, the minimum density has the most minimum effect on the neighborhood.
Yeah.
So.
So you can say.
Well, let me state it, and we'll just vote it and it'll be over with, because we've got to move on. We are recommending, unless you object, we're recommending that the staff recommended at City Council, the minimum density per acre allowed. Is that good enough?
It has to be the minimum of a density to achieve some kind of goal. So that's, that's what I get hung up on with on this.
The goal is to meet the city's RENA.
The compliance of the housing element and to do that with a minimal amount of density.
What the proposal you have, the commission has in front of you, does that. So there is a RENA number that the city has to meet. Every city has to meet it.
It's 20.
So 20 dwelling units an acre is what gets the city to that point.
Okay.
That is the minimum necessary to meet our RENA.
The opposite of it, which we should include in this recommendation, is the maximum. Because that's where you get too many people, too much problem.
We're saying 20 maximum.
20 maximum, 20 minimum. Is that correct?
Maximum should be 27.
Guys, can I just interject one thing? I think globally, we have to keep in mind too that this is really only applied to three parcels in the city, what you guys are discussing up here. So the density, I think that Skylar is referring to, or Commissioner Peak, I'm sorry about that, is that really, you know, we're largely a single-family residential community. And so the ADUs are probably more impactful than the, you know, the multifamily aspect of this project. So as Joyce said, we have to use some of the ADUs to meet our RENA numbers. So this is, the proposal in front of you is the, you know, most minimum give and take we had with the state.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I follow on that?
Veronica, if I can just interject, the minimum 20 units to the acre is state law. It's default density established under AB, actually, it's been longer than AB 1397. It's been around for at least.
We're moving on, right.
It's 16 years. So you have to have the minimum density of 20 units to the acre. The maximum density has to be above the 20 units to the acre. You cannot have a density, you cannot have a zone that mandates only exactly 20 units to the acre, which had happened before in the city of San Tito, and the state has considered that to be invalid before. That was during the fifth cycle housing.
Okay, what's your next topic?
Okay, let's talk about who we are counting as affordable or low-income, very.
No, 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 Craig.
John, John, I have things I want to say here.
You do not, you get, you get, come on.
I'm going home. Thanks, everybody.
See you, Craig.
This is bullshit, seriously.
We have to do our job. Now, we.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. When we're doing, for example, the arena lot, the 110, it's got a blue line stream down the middle of it and ESHA setbacks and all this kind of stuff. Is that avoided by this project?
No, the density that was arrived out, was arrived out assuming that the ESHA was there and there was a 100-foot setback. So when these, when these parcels were selected, there was an EIR, in 2013, there was an EIR that studied ESHA and looked at realistically how many units could go on those sites. And they took in the fact that there's RENA and there's a 100-foot setback. So all of that stays in place.
Okay.
Chair, real quick, I just want to put on the record that Commissioner Hill has left, but we still maintain a quorum.
Yes. Okay, Skylar, you got something else?
I was just going to say that I would be very helpful that that gets outlined to the council in the beginning, so that they don't arise into some of the questions that we have where it's like, look, we've already looked at this based on the constraints of these parcels. And I think that that's evident in some of the areas in the staff report. And I would just put that out there in the beginning of the presentation.
Yes.
And we'll take that as a recommendation.
He probably said that and I didn't hear it.
No, I didn't, but Commissioner Peak, that is an excellent idea. So we get, we'll take these, we'll study them, we'll present them to the city council and explain why they would probably not be accepted by HCD. Is Commissioner Hill's mic still on?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Another subject I want to bring up is, one of your provisions is that the builder gets to choose who is occupying, who's buying, who's selling, et cetera. And in other cities, it's usually either the city or nonprofit. The reason I bring this up is there's a situation that happened in Dana Point where the city council okayed a low-income housing. It ended up getting sold to their cousins and their nephews and all this stuff. It was only a 15-year-old, and they went from $400,000 to $2.5 million. So what, what, why are we saying that the builder is choosing the tenants and vetting the tenants instead of some other agency or a nonprofit? How do we know that these are low-income people, et cetera?
So it would depend on who was proposing the project. Many times, it is a nonprofit that is proposing their affordable housing, because that's, they are eligible for grants. Sometimes cities partner with nonprofits. I think, and again, I will let either Lilly or Veronica address this and how typical affordable housing projects are built, but I don't think it's generally just by a market rate developer. They're not in the market to build affordable housing.
This is Veronica, and I think the city attorney has a lot of experience. He said that about low-income housing tax credit. But usually, when it's an affordable housing project or projects that has affordability in exchange for density bonus or some other things, you have a development agreement that specify how the tenants, how the developer has to outreach and choose the tenants and what are the requirements, what are the income and all that. And the other thing too, usually, you do an annual, require annual reporting or annual monitoring. For example, my company would go out to the city of Glendora every year to monitor the affordable units and review all the documentation to make sure the tenants are, in fact, low-income. So there are things that you can put in your development agreement to make sure that they are, that the developer properly outreach to the right people, renting it to the right people, and continue to comply with the requirements of the development agreement.
But as I understand, our plan has nothing. It just says the developer gets to choose.
Well, the housing element is a policy document. It's not a document that actually outlines all these specific conditions. It will be in the development agreement.
But I don't, I don't remember reading about a development agreement in our, in our presentation.
That's typically what's required when you're doing affordable housing projects.
Yeah, it's typically what's required, but this is Malibu. This is where you can buy a piece of property and build it, you know, sell it, $400,000 condo.
Chair, I want to answer that question a little bit more. Affordable housing in California, to get the tax credits, which all of these projects are, requires that a nonprofit own at least 51% of the project. So they're going to be the one in charge. And then some of them will self-manage the properties or they will outsource that to a contract party.
What would happen if a, one of the people pointed out in Nextdoor that, and I don't know his name, that the, a low-income housing developer in Malibu just bought a $40 million house and is trying to, you know, so it can be exceedingly profitable and maybe he doesn't need the tax credit. So I would recommend, we recommend that it's required to have a, what do we call that, agreement? And it's required to be reviewed by the city specifically under what other cities do. And I don't, you know more about what other cities do, but we don't necessarily require, in our, our plan, we do not necessarily require it's a nonprofit. Okay, we don't necessarily require they get a tax credit.
I will comment on that. So based upon the math of the density, you're talking about $202,000 per unit for the land? Just on that one project at this price? These units, when they're completed, if it's a 1,400-square-foot unit, it's going to be worth close to $3 million. Why does someone need to even go to a nonprofit to do this project?
Exactly. So I think we should require that, and I think we should have consensus. It's either a nonprofit with an approved plan or, for example, the mobile home parks have a, had a, I don't know if it's still in existence, a mobile home commission run by the city that reviewed their, their program. But we need something other than just the developer deciding those things. And I think that's not unreasonable. They say it's standard. I'm sure it's standard in every city there is, but I doubt if, if you had one in Montecito, you'd need one.
Chair, could we maybe make a recommendation that why don't we have them give some options to the council as to how they could word that? You think that's vital?
I have one more comment. I've heard of communities where there's a cap in regards to the resale price of a development down the road if someone wanted to flip it, where that basically locks in a minimum profit to them.
And then, do these have to stay long, these have to stay low-income units forever?
30 years, right?
What's the time constraint?
Because I remember reading it was 30 years.
Could you require longer?
So I will just go back with a reminder that the housing element is a policy document and that typically, these types of requirements would be placed in a, the zoning code.
Oh, are we doing our code?
Not in the housing element. And again, Veronica and Lilly, please jump in at any time. There are housing element experts.
If I may add something, in the MMC amendments we're proposing, we do, there is provisions about administration and monitoring. And one of these is that it allows the city council by resolution to adopt procedures for implementing this section, which is affordable housing overlay, including documents that establish standards for determining household income, restricted unit cost, provisions for continued monitoring of tenant eligibility and other eligibility criteria.
So we already have that in there?
Well, we don't have it in there. We allow them to do it. So I would, I would think we should recommend
You recommend that be required?
That be adopted in the MMC when you're changing the MMC.
Okay.
Is that, is that consensus on that? Do it, do it upfront, instead of wait the politics to go around? Because we, we're, what, six years late on this? You know, we'll be 10 years late on that, you know?
And we'd just like to note that Veronica Tam does have her hand raised to provide comment on this.
My apology, I forgot to blow it from after I spoke last time. But, but I think, you know, it's okay to put it in the MMC. It's just not, it's too detailed to put it in the housing element as a policy document.
Right, but we're, tonight, we're doing both, right? We're changing MMC and the LIP. Okay, okay, so we have consensus on that. Okay, what else do you have? Okay, I, I, is there any exemption for water and wastewater? Because this is a blue line stream. That's a big deal in Malibu. Drew brought up the fact that, you know, you got to build a treatment plant or something.
I think it still has to be totally compliant with the municipal code for the building code.
Well, does it? Or are they saying you got to build it no matter what and have a whole bunch of septic?
They would have to meet all building codes, all safety codes. They would have to, a project of that size, it would likely need a package plant for the, for the septic would be built per building code and per requirements.
Now, how about Public Works? If you build a big enough one, you had to put in a street light? Do they have to pay for that kind of stuff?
So.
Is it just like, like, like we do with every people? Because this appears to be without, without any planning review.
Keep in mind that even though they, it's a permitted use by right, the building of the structures would require a coastal development permit. And so that's where you look at septic and other factors like that. It has, it has to meet our code. There's no exceptions for not meeting, not meeting the building code.
There's no element of this not, of any part of this not meeting the code to get a coastal development permit?
No.
I mean, it definitely calls out some parts in different areas where things can't be discretionary, where it's by right. But even though I, just because I can build 25,000 square feet, I can't build it how I want to build it. It has to be built in compliant with the city's code.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Do you still have to get a will-serve letter and all that? Okay. The, I want to ask about mixed use. You are, we are apparently allowing mixed use in what you're proposing. And is that only for RENA housing?
No, the mixed use provision is simply to match what's already in the LIP. So the LIP already allows mixed use with a conditional use permit in the commercial general zone. So this was just a cleanup item to make it, make the municipal code consistent with the local coastal program. It's not adding anything new. It's already a permitted use.
Well, I don't remember that, because we've never, ever, ever had any, any request for a mixed-use property. So is it actually in our LIP that you could, downtown, you could go in a CN zone and build low-income units on top of a grocery store?
So mixed use in this is generally referred to as residential and commercial.
Right.
It does not have to necessarily have anything to do with affordable housing.
No, I understand that, but we're not opening up the door for mixed use. It's already here, you're saying, nobody's, in 33 years, nobody's ever mentioned it?
Yes, it's, it's in the city's LIP. It's listed as permitted in the CG zone with a conditional use permit.
Chair?
Yes. Yes.
Can I ask, Joyce, has the city of Malibu ever permitted a low-income housing project? Under cityhood, no, I don't believe. Under the county's guidance, had there ever been specific low-income housing development project approved that we're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of. We did look to see whether there were any deed restriction, deed restricted or rent restricted units in the city and, or even any Section 8. I, I believe there is maybe one Section 8 in this, in the city, but other than that.
That's it.
No affordable units.
New territory, folks, new territory.
The, the one project out on PCH when the city first incorporated, I, I don't remember the address. It was on the east end, had to pay an affordable housing fee. And that's what the city uses.
Like the in-lu fee?
Yeah.
We're not going to build it, but here's the money.
Exactly. That was a county project that the city took over once they incorporated.
Thank you.
Now, in multifamily, and I'm a little hazy on this, there's a provision in here that says if you want to add another 500 square feet, you can put in more units. I don't know where it is. There's a, you can increase the density on multifamily apartment buildings.
Are you talking about the provision that if you increase a multifamily or commercial building by more than 500 square feet, you need a CUP? Is that, I believe that's what you're referring to?
Yes.
Yeah. And that is not waived by, by any of this?
That is getting changed. Yes, right?
Okay. And what is it changing to?
It's changed to a by right.
So you can automatically build more?
You just do not need a CUP anymore.
But you need a CDP?
Perhaps, if it's not exempt, yes.
Oh, boy. Okay.
I feel like we're getting there.
We're, we're starting to get there.
We're on 16 of 19.
Go ahead.
Well, no, I said we're on 16 of 19, like working through the.
Yeah.
Different things. I was going to ask to better understand that, but I think I'm clear on it now.
So what's 17 of 19?
17 is expedite the review process.
Okay. Oh, that, that was a question I had. There's, in Malibu, our, our LIP says any decision by the director can be appealed. And I read in here that the director's making all these determinations, but it doesn't say anything about being able to appeal them. Can, can all these determinations made by the director that are spelled out in this, can they be appealed?
I'm not certain of which, which particular decisions that the director would make that you're referring to, but generally if it's permitted by right, then, no, it's an administrative permit. And that, that would not be appealable to the planning commission.
So let's say somebody comes in with their, their project and they're going for the low-income housing on one of the properties by Zumares. But now they're in the, the building and, or the, the coastal development permit stage where they're coming to get their coastal development permit. That can be appealed, can it not?
I'm, I'm sorry. That could be a what?
Appealed. Any part of that.
The coastal development permit?
Yes.
Could, yes.
And even, even in the sense where you have to expedite the part of the review process and part of that review process is done administratively by the planning director and staff, can any of those decisions be appealed? Yes or no?
Uh, no. If, if it is an administrative permit that's being issued, that is not appealable.
But what, what about the sense where it's like, it's an administrative use, okay? But they still need to get the CDP, right? Can that, is that, that coastal development permit going through a hearing depending on like the level of it? Or is that administrative?
So Tyler would know better than me that the, the administrative coastal development or a full coastal development permit, but both of those are, one is heard by the planning commission and the other one is appealable to the planning commission. But in terms of, so what would happen if, if the, somebody came in and they wanted an affordable housing project and that would be approved by the director? It's administrative permit. Yes, you can build affordable housing here. Yes, you can build a multifamily here. Then when they came in to do the building, the only thing that would be in front of the planning commission and the only thing that could be appealed were things related to the coastal development permit, which is related to development.
So the structure of development, roads, ingress, egress, things like that?
Right.
Okay.
Exactly.
Well, I seem to remember there was something in, it's, it's, for example, you cannot, I thought every decision by the planning director, what happens if he, he made a mistake? You can't appeal it. He says that's developable. Rebecca?
If the director issues approval of an administrative plan review, there is a mechanism that is called a request for review, where the, the planning director and the case planner consider grounds that are filed by somebody that has concerns about the project and render a decision about whether the project was appropriately conditioned as it is, or whether additional conditions of approval or reversal of the decision.
But that's all up to them. There is no real appeal.
It's a request for review.
You can just look at it like this. There's less on your plate then.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to lighten it up. It's 10:30.
Well, I have to ask the MTC.
You are. Here's your answer.
Since I control this development in the city. Okay.
I think we've, I think we've made a pretty good, good dent into this. Do you have any other questions from us that you want feedback on before you go to them?
No.
You sure?
We will, we can, if you have, I've written down the ideas and what the planning commission would like to see. And we will definitely let the, what we'll do is spend a little more time to see how, whether it's even possible, whether HCD would even approve that. And then we would provide your recommendations to the city council with the understanding is that we are under a very tight deadline and the city council is under a very tight, tight deadline. And any changes, even if the city council thinks these are.
Important.
Any of these are important ideas?
May not happen.
They, yeah, it may not happen.
I think that, just if I may add one more thing, not to change any of that, I just think it's important for the, maybe our planning director and city attorney and hopefully city manager who's listening to this, that that messaging be like conveyed to the public of how the process has got to where it is and how it moves forward. I think it's very easily lost in everybody's comments on this, that we don't want to be left like some other cities have, where I think it's references developers remedy or something like that, builders remedy and projects coming in and getting approved that have no set of eyes on them. And I think that's the whole goal here, what we want, what we're trying to avoid.
Yeah. I, my only comment on this is that whoever's going to be doing this, it's not whether there's going to be some sort of charitable nonprofit funding or if it's done privately, this project's going to be appreciating its value by a zero every 10 years. And it's not the running of the project that's going to be creating the appreciations of, actually the project itself. And anything that we can do to make it best for the city in regards to that aspect going forward, if the city council could take that into recommendation.
One, one thing that, that can do that, and, and I don't know if we've already answered this or not, is can you increase the 30 years to a higher number? Is, as far as restrictions? Does anybody know the answer to that?
I, I would, that would be a Lilly or Veronica question. Again, that would be part of a code amendment, not in the Housing Element.
I don't, I can look that up.
Do we know that?
She said, no, she'd need to look it up.
Okay. Well, I would, I would like just to recommend that the highest, the longest period available be used. I don't know how they pick 30 because.
Life expectancy of a building without major renovations or repairs.
Well, life expectancy of a building in Malibu is considered to be 100 years. But.
If I can project to, a lot of density bonus programs and all that actually requires, I believe, 55 years. But a lot of jurisdictions do deed restrict affordable housing in perpetuity.
There you go.
Well, there, there, I, I think that is.
Is there a reason why we can't deed restrict these properties to, to low-income housing in perpetuity?
And I, the reason why is because, as I understand it, you correct me if I'm wrong, the minute they drop off, they're not in RENA anymore and we got to find another place. So.
So essentially what you'd be doing is setting yourself up for failure in 55 years.
Yeah. So I think our recommendation is in perpetuity restriction.
But again, that's only if it gets built, right? Then that, then that restriction goes on. Because right now.
No, yeah, nothing happens.
We just have to make the ability for these to be built, correct, Joyce? They don't have to actually be built.
Right.
That's something else that's very important for the public.
No, but if, if they're built, if they're built, they're, they're.
Yeah, so I think it would be wise for us to make the recommendation to the council that if these are built, that the deed restriction runs with the land as far as the low income.
I would recommend that the language is that they are consistent with the funding program or incentive program that they, that's outlined. So most of them are at least 55 years. If you do require in perpetuity, usually jurisdictions provide some kind of financial subsidies to extend that beyond the 55 years. So I think using at least 55 years is, is probably a good language, but I would not necessarily say, recommend at this point that you require all of them to be.
Okay. So consensus, a minimum of 55 years? And then the rest depends on subsidies and all that kind of stuff?
And, and this would be placed in the affordable housing overlay zone? Is that what you're referencing?
Yeah, that would be specific to those properties that could be the low-income.
In that zone, okay.
Can I make the motion to adjourn?
Well, just make sure we don't.
No, you need a vote on this.
We're, we're, we're three hours early, so I just want to make sure we don't forget something.
We need, we do need to have a vote on this. Yeah, to make the recommendation to city council. Okay, so I'll make the recommendation as the recommendations that we've made this evening.
And I'll second it.
Yeah, this one, we, we do need to have read into the record, the resolution.
And also all our recommendations too.
Rebecca, can we get a semi summary of those? And if we need to take a minute, that's fine too. Were there three?
I would like to ask for a phone a friend.
I, I could, Rebecca, if you need.
Thank you, Joyce, please.
So the recommendations were to establish a minimum unit size and minimum density, minimum density looking at constraints. So, oh, to take in consideration our constraints. I think this was Commissioner Hill's recommendation of, that the minimum density be established by constraints. A development agreement would be required and that the city would require a nonprofit to operate the affordable housing or to build affordable housing. And I don't remember if there was consensus on that or even if we could do that.
Yeah, there was. And, and, and did you have a review in there? We, we, we wanted a, some kind of city oversight?
If I could offer, the city of Calabasas had agreements with Archstone, which is a huge national apartment developer. And what happened there was they actually rented the units. The city reviewed under a development agreement, the applications, and helped conduct a lottery. So it was conducted by the city to fill the units.
Yeah. So where we're.
But it would be that the city's participation would include review and auditing of applications.
I very much understand that, but then you just have to know that you're spending city resources on that indefinitely into the future and that's going to cost money.
Most, yeah, most cities at this point now have a housing liaison or a position that oversees housing projects within the city.
I don't think that we have one here. But we have our consultant.
It's going to come quickly.
That's over there. Yeah, I would be reluctant to do that because I think you're just.
No, remember, we, we have, we still have it. I, I think we still have it on the mobile home park. It, it hasn't met in years, but when something comes up, there's a way to review.
It hasn't met in years because it's not low-income housing where they're getting applications changing every year or months.
Once you got a good deal, ask how many people in New York move out of their apartment.
Chair, real quick, can we, I don't think we actually have clarification on what the changes were here. So I'm certainly not clear. So if we can have those read one more time because we want this to be very clear. Normally I wouldn't care as much, but we have a settlement to abide by. I thought that the, the size of the units, I thought we decided not to do that. That did not go through. Yeah. That did not go through. Yeah. No, no sizing specific of the units. That was a, we were not doing that. Joyce, could you read those?
The 55 years was, I believe, the.
Minimum.
Yes. The overlay zone will have a 55-year deed restriction minimum. Yeah. As a recommendation. On the density, we said 20 to 27, 20, 20 minimum, 27 maximum per acre.
Yes. And that is the, the current.
The recommendation.
Yeah.
And, and you're saying that you don't want to have a, a recommendation that the city has some kind of review process? Well, I think, I think we absolutely have to have one. But now the city council can decide, or later they can decide how they review it, but you can't just turn, turn subsidized stuff over to people to be honest with. They'll, 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 they'll game the system.
If I could remind the commission that Allison Cook did re-propose zoning amendment to that effect. So.
Okay.
That, that is in the proposed zoning amendment.
Exactly.
As long as that, our recommendation is that is concurrent with this approval, though. That's not something in the future.
That was like a LA.
Do you have it?
That's already, it's already in there for that to happen when the code update, correct? Correct. Okay, great. So we don't need it as an amendment to the staff report or the, the Housing Element draft. So again, we have a 55-year deed restriction in the overlay zone as a change that's being recommended from what staff presented tonight. The development agreement being required for affordable housing projects as a recommendation. Was that a consensus? I believe it was.
Can you repeat it one more time?
A development agreement will be required as a part of any affordable housing development in the city. So those are the two changes I have. And then you have going along with a lot of the other recommendations. Right, that's already in there. I'm just, anything that's different from what was presented in the staff report. So I have those two. Is there anything that's missing?
Okay, I'm over your turn.
We need to make a vote.
Oh, we have to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for those recommendations.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Please call, call, call it a roll.
Okay. I apologize. I need to look for this very quickly. Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill is absent. Commissioner Smith?
This is just for those two recommendations.
And, and for the adoption of the planning mission resolution that was before you this evening?
Yes.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Yes.
And motion carries.
Chair, may I make a motion to adjourn in memory of Gonzalo, the LA SD member that passed away?
And do I have a second?
I second. I second.
Thank you, and do you want to just do that by consensus or roll call?
Consensus, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, and we're leaving our documents here for you.
Yeah, thank you very much. We'd like to get the Housing Element.
Thank you so much for the water bottle again.